All right, good evening everyone. Welcome to the City of Sebastian City Council meeting. First thing we're going to do is call this meeting to order. We're going to have the invocation by Reverend Grant Foster from Riverside Church Assembly of God and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Nun. Please rise.
Let's pray. Our Father and our God, first we thank you. We thank you for the opportunity we have to live in one of the most beautiful places on the face of the earth. We thank you for this council, our staff. We pray blessing and guidance on them tonight. Give them wisdom as they deliberate, as they make decisions. We thank you for all that will be done tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so much. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Jones.
President.
Vice Mayor Nun.
Here.
Councilmember Dixon.
She's on the bus.
We'll take that as here.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
And Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor, is there any agenda modifications?
Mr. Mayor, I have two items I'd like to modify on the agenda if I may.
Okay.
The first of those is item 11A, which is the solid waste discussion. I'd like to add an item to the beginning of that. We'll call it 11A1, which is the discussion of the solid waste franchise fee. And then to renumber 11A1 to 11A2 and 11A2 to 11A3. And then to renumber 11A1 to 11A2, and 11A2 to 11A3.
All right, the second one is for Item 12D.
I'd like to expand that to actually have three components. Component number one is discuss charter officers' evaluation. Component number two is to discuss charter officers' contracts. And component number three is to set schedule for new contracts.
Got it. All right, thank you. Any objections?
Are you moving that to unfinished business, or leaving it as new business?
No, under new business, just instead of just D, have D1, D2, D3, basically.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
That's just for clarity, actually.
Yes, got it.
Mr. Mayor, I would like if you would consider at this time if we tabled Item 12B, because the employee negotiation contract are not done, and...
I agree with that.
Yeah, I support that also, so is that a motion?
Can...
Yes.
I second that motion.
Okay, can we discuss that?
Yes.
I would like to, can we ask the city manager if there's... Because originally, that was going to be something that was going to be added, whether it was an existing contract or a new contract, because it was something they're not offered at this present time.
I think it's basically almost negotiating not in good faith if we start adding benefits to the employees while we're still discussing contract negotiations, and they're not part of that contract negotiation.
Makes sense, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I was also under the interpretation that it was kind of a carrot.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, all right. Call it off.
Vice Mayor Nun.
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right. Now, we're going to move on to, and bear with us, ladies and gentlemen that are here for other items, but we have six proclamations to do this evening. It's probably not going to take too long. Vice Mayor Nun is going to take the first two. I will take the second two, and Mr. McPartlin will take the third.
First what we're going to do is for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Can we have our dispatchers come up? So this is a proclamation from the City of Sebastian for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 9th through the 15th of 2023. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and when an emergency occurs, the quick response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the accuracy of information communicated from citizens who telephone the Sebastian 911 Communication Center. And whereas the public safety dispatchers of the Sebastian Police Department have contributed to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during the performance of their job. Now therefore, I, Chris Nun, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Vice Mayor of City Sebastian, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through the 15th, 2023, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Sebastian, and honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and Sebastian safe. Fred, the Vice Mayor, I mean, the mayor has set his hand and caused the seal of City Sebastian this 12th day of April, 2023. I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you, because, you know, many people don't realize how hard being a dispatcher is, and knowing many, many dispatchers in my career with government, it's a really tough job, and thank you for sticking it out. Thank you for working really hard to help keep our citizens safe. Thank you. Yeah, we're a great team, we all work together, have a great department behind us, and appreciate the recognition. Thank you. All right, next, we have our unsung heroes of our police department. If I could have our three volunteers up here, please. Good evening. This is a proclamation from the City of Sebastian for National Volunteer Week, April 16th through April 22nd, 2023. Whereas throughout our history, our nation has been shaped by Americans who have volunteered their time and energy to help our beautiful city and their fellow man and woman. People come together daily to give their time to make this a better place. And whereas volunteer service is a lifelong pursuit that strengthens all of us, and with every act, our communities are drawn closer and our country is made stronger by the generous spirit of volunteers. And whereas today, we express our sincere gratitude to the many City Hall and Police Department Community Service volunteers who contribute thousands of hours of their time to make our city operate smoothly and keep our citizens safe. We are all richer for their presence. Now therefore, I, Chris Nun, Vice Mayor of City Sebastian, do hereby proclaim April 16th through April 22nd, 2023, as National Volunteer Week, and I urge everyone to observe this week by volunteering to make service a part of our daily lives, and to express our gratitude to those who give every day. Mayor Jones has set his hand and caused the seal of City Sebastian to be fixed this 12th day of April, 2023. Once again, it's really important to say, if you don't realize how many hours these guys spend out there patrolling our roads, and I know some may look and say, "Well, but they can't give tickets, and they can't arrest people." Yes, but they're a force, they're there, they're keeping things straight. If they see problems, they're calling the police officer and saying, "Hey, I've got this issue, I need you to come deal with." They're also keeping our school zones safe out there on 512, if you haven't noticed, to try to keep our speeders under control, and they're doing a great job at that. But thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for recognizing the volunteer unit of the police department. We work closely with the officers of the police department, day in and day out, and I can tell you, we can't ask for a better group of people to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone here from the Exchange Club, or anything for the proclamation for National Child Abuse Prevention? Sign Nun. National Child Abuse Prevention Month, April, 2023. Whereas the City of Sebastian is committed to protecting our most vulnerable and ensuring our children grow up safe, healthy, educated, and prepared to reach their full potential. And whereas children raised in safe, stable, and nurturing environments are more likely to enjoy good physical and mental health, succeed academically and socially, and achieve economic prosperity. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, and we have one sitting with us, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas the City of Sebastian acknowledged that we must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families, prevention remains the best defense for our children. Now therefore, I, Fred Jones, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Sebastian, and urge all citizens to dedicate ourselves to improving the quality of life for all children and families. I'm also with the Exchange Club... Is that coming out?
Yes.
Okay, can't hear too well. With the Sebastian Exchange Club, and our primary mission there is the prevention of child abuse. So all the money that we raise from our organization go to support children and families. Felicia here?
Proclamation for Arbor Day, April 28th, 2023. Whereas the first Arbor Day was held in Nebraska City in 1872, they offered prizes to counties for the largest number of trees planted, and it was estimated that more than a million trees were planted on that day. And whereas trees clean our air, filter our water, and even slow storm surge and flooding in our city, trees also help reduce the effects of climate change by absorbing carbon dioxide and releasing oxygen back into the air. Whereas through tree preserving actions, the city has been awarded the Tree City USA designation for the 21st consecutive year. This award demonstrates our effort to protect this valuable resource and enhance our quality of life. Now therefore, I, Fred Jones, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day in the City of Sebastian, and urge all citizens to protect our trees and nurture our relationships with our natural resources so that we may continue enjoying a thriving, livable community. And I think Felicia may have something to say about something we have coming up.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. We do have our Earth Day event coming up, that's going to be on April 22nd, so if anybody is able to make it out, we greatly appreciate the support. The Natural Resources Board has worked terribly hard to make this event a success, and we hope you'll come out and see us there. And for those of you who hadn't heard until today that we are a Tree City USA, this is something that has been going on, you know, for the past 21 years, and we're very proud that this continues, that we have continued efforts to preserve our trees in town, and we hope to continue doing so going forward.
Thank you.
I asked the mayor...
No, that's what I thought, too, it's the opener.
I asked the mayor earlier, I said, "Who's the opener? I guess I'm the closer." So, and then, again, Felicia, this is a proclamation for International Earth Day, April 22nd. Whereas governments, businesses, and citizens are essential in harnessing the revolutionary progress needed to save humanity from the climate crisis, and whereas overcoming climate change is within reach if we work together to commit to action and invest in our planet and our collective future. And whereas the City of Sebastian has chosen to participate in this global movement by adopting the Sustainable Sebastian Initiative, which strives to protect our natural resources while balancing the social needs of our community. Now therefore, I, standing in for Fred Jones, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim April 22nd as International Earth Day, and encourage all to celebrate the earth and join the City of Sebastian's Natural Resources Board at their Earth Day event in Riverview Park on April 22nd.
I really appreciate the second proclamation. Every year, as part of our Tree City USA stuff, we always do the Arbor Day proclamation, but this one caught me by surprise. So I greatly appreciate the recognition and all the hard work that the Natural Resources Board has done. And if anybody is interested in our Sustainable Sebastian programs, really recommend that maybe you come to our next NRB meeting, or at least tune in and find out a little bit more about the projects that are going on after Earth Day.
Thank you. That's all I got for you. All right, it's funny that April is Preservation Month, it seems like, and there's no greater natural resource than the children, who it's Child Abuse Month. And anybody that passes by Riverview Park and you see the flags flying, each of those flags stand for a child that died last in 2022. So that's what they're in recognition of. All right, the final proclamation is for water conservation, April, 2023. Where... Oh, do I have James Cannon? I'm sorry. You knew on the job?
No.
Okay. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and whereas the state of Florida, the Water Management Districts, and the City of Sebastian work together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation, and whereas the City of Sebastian and the state of Florida have designated April typically a dry month as Florida's Water Conservation Month, to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's water resources. And whereas leak prevention is commonly thought to be the first step in conserving water, the City of Sebastian encourages citizens and businesses to focus on fixing leaks. Now therefore, I, standing in for Fred Jones, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month in Sebastian, and call upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and fix leaks in all forms of water loss.
Since I'm last, I get to really drag this out, right? I'll be quick. Yeah, counsel, Mr. Mayor, we certainly appreciate you recognizing this vital issue. Despite what you see outside, we are in kind of a dry spell right now with regards to water, and, you know, proclamations like this help bring attention to issues like water conservation. We urge everybody to check your faucets, check your showerheads, your toilets, your irrigation systems. Even the smallest leaks add up, especially with the number of people moving to this state every day. So every individual can make a difference. Thank you.
All right. No, not you, hang on. Next up, we have a presentation by Indian River County Healthy Start, Janay Brown. Please come forward.
Right here. Okay. Thanks for having us, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. We're so excited to present to the City of Sebastian our program. So it's Indian River County Healthy Start, and our overall mission is to make sure every baby makes it to their first birthday without dying. And so we do that by catering to our community and the needs that we see fit for them. So we offer programs such as fatherhood support programs, motherhood support programs, lactation services, prenatal education classes, in-home visitation programs, we have doula services, we have playgroups for families. So we have been serving for over 30 years. We reach about 95% of the population here in Indian River County alone. We are housed in partners, and we're also housed in our main building, which is off of 17th Street in the Bridgewater Plaza. So let's get into our program. So the first program is maternity navigation. So any... The maternity navigation is basically like the head of the operation. So anyone who wants to join our programs, they reach out to a maternity navigator, and then they sort out what their needs are, and then they place them where they see fit within our programs. So babies and beyond, that is our... We partner with Cleveland Clinic, so we have doulas on call, so if a mother goes into the hospital and she's laboring alone, she can request a doula, and she'll have someone there to cater to her, because the nurses are in and out, so they can't cater to the parents 24/7, the entire time that they're laboring. After they deliver, we have lactation counselors, they come bedside to help everyone.
Hold the pause just a second, we had to pause.
Okay.
It wasn't us.
So after they... All right. Hopefully it stays now. Okay, so after they deliver, and they go to the baby side, we have our lactation nurses who come over and assist the mothers with latching and bonding with the baby, and also the fathers, if they're there, we teach them how to help encourage mom during her postpartum period. We also have a free wellness program that we offer to the mothers through babies and beyond. So after they leave the hospital, within the first 10 days, we send out a registered nurse to do a free wellness check on mom and baby, and sometimes they catch important... And sometimes they catch important needs that are going on with the parent, and then they'll send them into their providers or send them to the pediatricians, and they get it addressed immediately because sometimes they don't even know what they're going through at that point. So our fatherhood initiative is very new. So we have this really great support program for fathers within Indian River County. So we have every Wednesday at 6 o'clock, we have a fatherhood support group, which is just fathers supporting fathers. And then we also have a 12-week program where it's a one-on-one, more intimate scene. And our fatherhood engagement person, Mike Felton, he's been really crushing it. So we're really excited because at first, we couldn't get dads through the doors, but now we, word of mouth, we have been getting like quite a few. We have about 20 right now. So our Grow Doula Program, we were actually just brought out by the state of Florida. So we will, we have been going from like city to city within Florida, educating and starting up our Grow Doula Program in different Healthy Starts throughout the state of Florida. So we're excited about that. This is also a free service that we offer. They start seeing the parents at about 27 weeks, and then they, they're with them up until two weeks postpartum. Health Education is just one of our in-home visitation programs. They teach them how to track milestones, nutrition, mental health. They provide them with resources that they may need that the parents don't necessarily know are available for them. Healthy Families is the same. It's just depending on the situation. Some of them are to prevent child abuse. Some of them are to just teach them how to bond with the kids and, you know, stuff of that nature. And then our Nurse Family Partnership, this is for first-time moms. So this part, this partnership is with the Department of Health, Cheryl Martinez, and then we have Shannon Bragg. Those are our two RN nurses. And they see all the first-time moms within Indian River County who are interested in our program. This is Elaine. She's actually one of our home visitation nurses for the Babies &amp; Beyond program. And she's been with Healthy Start for like many, many years. So she's seen like moms and then their kids having kids, so. And then Parents as Teachers is another in-home visitation program. That's Kathy in the picture. She's been with us for about 10 years now. So this one is to increase the perinatal knowledge of early childhood development, build stronger attachments between child and caregiver, early detections of developmental delays and health issues, and increase school, increase school readiness and success. And then the most important thing that keeps us driven is FEMA. So we assess every child death-related issue from here now all the way to, we do Indian River County now, St. Lucie County, Martin County, and we do Okachobee County. So, so this is the, the part of the program. Yeah, the drive. So we assess each death of each baby. And then we go from there after we assess the situation, what could we do to prevent this from happening again? So that's the basis of Healthy Start. And then our Peace Program is, we also do a bunch of trainings within the community, and that's the basis of this program. So when we see a new need, we have Jessica, who's over this part of the program. She goes and she creates a new program. And after she gets it in a stable condition, she passes along to one of the other coordinators so that they can maintain the, the new program. And that's Healthy Start and everything that we do.
All right, thank you so much, Janay.
Thank you so much for having us.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to thank you. The City of Sebastian Parks and Recreation has agreed we are doing our Mother's Day Garden of Love. So be on the lookout for that garden in Riverview Park coming up to Mother's Day, and thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. McPartlin. Hang on, Mr. McPartlin, you have something?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment about the Healthy Start program. People don't understand that they worked so hard to add positive outcomes for every child being born. And when she mentioned the fetal infant mortality review, I sit on that, and now they've done them in the other counties. So I got to sit on those. The only problem I have with them is they hold those fetal infant mortality reviews on a Friday afternoon, and it ruins my entire weekend. But I know that that group is making a difference, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for participating. Very important.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dodd, would you share their announcements with us?
Yes, sir. One that's not on here is we talked about Arbor Day. And I know that the Pelican Island Audubon Society has a new shipment of Florida native trees that they would love to give away to people to plant on Arbor Day. So if anyone's interested in planting a tree for Arbor Day, they have those trees there, and they would love to give them to you. So you might pay attention, go back and visit their, their facility off of Oslo Road now, to the ones that are in the chamber, they're in the announcements. On April 14, the Chamber of Commerce Concert in the Park. The group is called Group Therapy, and we all can use some of that. So it'd probably be a good concert to go to. That's between 5:30 and 8:00 p.m. We have three events on April 22. First is the Natural Resources Earth Day Celebration. One of the highlights of that to me is pulling some oyster mats and trying to see what kind of growth we have. I'm not sure this year with the hurricane damages whether they can find one to pull, but they may be able to do that.
Oh, no, we have some.
You have some you can pull?
This past week, there are lots of them there, so.
Last year, we were amazed to see how much actual new growth was in those oyster mats that were, that were placed by the, by the Natural Resources Board. There's also a paper shredding and electronic recycling event at Riverview Park from 9:00 to noon. That is hosted, I believe, by Waste Management. And then there is a spring cleaning and unwanted household items on the Barber Street Sports Complex. And I used that two years ago to take an old couch, and I watched them just break it up into a truck. And it was a happy event for me to see that happen because I didn't have to figure out a way to get it to the dump. So that's also hosted by Waste Management. And those are the announcements.
All right, thank you so much, sir. Before we get into public input or anything that's not on the agenda, I want to make sure everyone here knows what we don't do in this chamber is personal attacks on people. We respect everybody. And then every, all the conversation is directed at the chair, just for clarification. All right, public input. Anyone have anything that's not currently on the agenda? Yes, sir, come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Richard Yomor. Sebastian, I have a suggestion for you guys and an observation. The suggestion is, and Councilmember McPartlin, you'll remember this, about seven years ago, part of our budget was, included the septic-to-sewer program for the area and the overlay district down, down close to the riverfront. And that was a program where we would grant people $5,000 if they wanted to change their septic tank into, and go into a sewer, okay? It wasn't a very successful program. And I was instrumental, and we were instrumental, the council was, in getting another $100,000 added to our grant funds through the Indian River Lagoon Council, okay? One of the problems is that we had the carrot, but we didn't have stick. And without, without somebody knowing that they have to switch over, you know, if there's going to be money out of pocket, it didn't, the program didn't work very well, bottom line. What I'm suggesting is that you all have the power. Three votes has the power, if you bring this forward, to put a, some type of regulation, legislation, ordinance that if you live in the over, over, you know, the over, what do they call that, the?
CRA.
CRA district. If you're close to the lagoon, you have times certain where you have to switch over since the sewer pipes are there. If we have that stick, then you can re-up the carrot. And I believe there's $2.5, $3 million comes in next door every year. And we can, I'm sure, get another grant of 100, 200,000, whatever we, we write it for, to help us switch over. And it's common knowledge that a huge percentage of the pollution that, that hurts the lagoon comes from septic tanks. We have 360,000 septic tanks in the Treasure Coast area and this, on the lagoon. If you've ever watched the, the flow of water, the groundwater, when they dug a ditch down there by Captain Hiram's, they went down about six feet, and you could just see the water, the groundwater flowing into the lagoon because you've got, you know, the high area there that just pushes it. And so septic tanks that are close to the lagoon are the ones that we really should target first. So that's my suggestion. Maybe talk to the attorneys, city attorney, city manager, see how you can craft something that would give people an impetus to switch over, and then find the money to, to help them switch over. I would also say, reach out to the county and see what they'll put up. I don't think the county has a program currently in place to do that. And so if, if the city puts up money, and you can get the twist of the arm of the county to put some money in there, perhaps we could get switched over septic-to-sewer without very little money being, coming out of somebody's pocket. That's the suggestion. Observation, we do the pledge of allegiance every, every time we have a meeting here. We pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands. And it just is a private pet peeve that so many people that are even in high office talk about our country being a democracy. It is not. It is a republic, and there's a big difference. But that's just personal pet peeve. When, when we, we talk about democracy, it's a representative, representative democracy, and we elect you folks, and you're doing your duties. If we enjoy that, we're going to put you back in office. If not, we'll elect somebody else. That is the republican form of government. And I'm just, is a pet peeve when people say, well, this democracy, or that democracy, or it's against this democracy. We are a republic. Ben Franklin, who was one of the signers of the Declaration and put it together, when it was asked, he said, what type of government are you putting together? He said, a republic if you can keep it. So hopefully, we can keep it. Thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, can, can I address the sewer, septic-to-sewer piece of that? Just to make sure there's no confusion?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Just, just so you know, Richard, last year, this council, these, these people here plus, Kelly wasn't on at that time, I don't believe. We, we actually approved, that's the exact thing that you're talking about. We sanctioned the study that was done. We've already had that study done. We have already determined that the septic tanks in the CRA are mandated to be converted to the collective sewer system. We've looked at grants. We found to our dismay that since we don't run the county, the, the septic, the wastewater utility, that the owner of the wastewater utility has to be the one to apply for the infrastructure grants. We're currently now in conversation with the county to try to discuss that process with them because of the, what, $2.5 million or some number of dollars it was going to take to do this, $3 million it was going to take to do this, a big enough portion of it was infrastructure, things like lift stations and stuff like that, that we can't grant for. It has to be done by the owner of the utility. And so we're working with the county to do that. As soon as we can work that process through, we are going to mandate connection within the CRA. And we'll have to figure out a way to pay for it. Hopefully, we can pay for the majority of it and not require the property owners to do that. But that's already been done by this council to, to take that action. So it was a great suggestion. We actually did it a year and a half ago.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on anything that's not on the current agenda? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Good evening, everybody. I don't usually come to the meetings, but I do participate in the town. And I've been a taxpayer now in the town of Sebastian for about 10 years. Been in Florida about 20. Anyway, when I first came into the town, my sister, my brother, my other sister live here. We would love the place, we loved the community. And we, we love Florida. Florida says that, you know, basically, we have more rights and freedoms here than a lot of other states. And the people that we have elected generally do exactly what the people want them to do. And we're thankful for that. Recently, it came up that, well, everything has been going up around us, except of course, a number of people like myself who are on fixed incomes. Our, our expenses have been going up left and right. And without my having to go back and get another job at my, my point in my life, it's like I have to cut things that I otherwise wouldn't want to do. But it's part of living and adjusting to changing times. Recently, I understand that they're, they're having a problem with the garbage pickup in the town.
Yeah, but we're going to have that come up on the agenda. So if you would like to speak when that comes up, you, you can at that point about that particular item.
Oh, okay. Is that later on in?
Yes, sir, it is.
All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, no problem. Yes, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak about anything that's not on the current agenda? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Nobody's raised their hand at this moment. Oh, sorry, someone just did.
I'm sorry. Sir, what was your name again? What was your name again, the clerk needs it for the record, your name?
My name, Martin Steiger.
Martin Steiger.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Mrs. Steiger.
I do have someone with their hand raised, actually.
All right, let's call them up.
Hello, Mr. Stevens, can you hear us?
Are you there?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thanks. Am I on?
Yes, you are. Yes, you are, Chris.
Bob Stevens here. I'm at 150 Concha Drive. I live, I live where the Collier and Joy Haven Waterways meet. Let me try to shut this other, I'm having trouble getting your meeting somehow or another. But anyways, there we go. I'll shut that one on. Okay, update what's going on with my waterways out here. You had been using a Biozyme, which is an antibiotic, for a few months, and I thought that was working fairly good. I've been using the Biozyme at the garden club now for over a year. Hasn't been too toxic up there, so I was kind of happy with that. But come February, you start using a brand-new chemical called Comine. Comine, and you've also added hydrothol with it. Now, these, these are hazards. Number three on the, on the, on the scale, acute hazard. I don't know where we're going with these, these waterways. You've been poisoned for over 20 years now. I thought we were going to be done with this. But now, you know, three months later of using this Comine and Hydrothol, my wife is sick, my dog is sick, you know, I'm, I'm sick. You know, I don't understand this, Mr. Mayor. This is, you're killing all the life forms here. The mangy's are gone, the fish are sick, the birds are gone. What, what's the deal? You know, I've been, I've been working on this for so many years. I'm, I'm ready, I got to quit, I got to move because you're making me sick. My doctors all tell me get out of town. So, you know, people, pets, you're killing animals, fish, birds, peoples and pets. And our canals all lead to the river. You know that, don't you? Please, people, read the MSDR sheets on what you're putting in our waterways because it's killing everything. And, and, and I'm proof of it right here. Bob Stevens, 150 Concha. Feel free to contact me. I have the proof. But I've got to leave because I'm sick, and I can't breathe this stuff anymore. Thank you for listening to me.
All right, thank you so much, sir. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
I have one more with their hand raised. One second.
Call them up.
Hello, Ms. Coy, can you hear us?
Hello?
Go ahead, Ms. Coy.
Thank you very much. Uh, just there was, I just wanted to let council know that there was some problems with the audio earlier. It may be resolved. I, I'm not sure what's going on, but, uh, you all are fading in and out and in and out. It's very difficult to follow. Um, and right now I don't even see my, my name, is, is my name up there?
It is.
Okay, I, because it, this is not what I'm normally used to. I don't, I don't know what's going on with the process right now, but it's different. And there was terrible problem with audio. It seems it might be fixed, but I'm not quite convinced, just to let you know. And I do intend to speak on some other matters. Thank you for listening. I hope, I hope this goes well because this is the only way I can participate at this time. Thank you.
All right, no problem, Ms. Coy, it's fixed.
Fred Barber's giving a thumbs up.
It's, it's fixed. All right, uh, is there anyone else?
No one else has raised their hand.
Uh, moving on to consent agenda, council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, um.
There's no money.
Is there money in there?
No, sir.
Nope, all right, uh, we'll call the roll anyway, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Dixon. Yes. Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Nun.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, um, committee reports, council, do anyone have any committee reports?
Well, we, me and Mr. Dodd had an interesting MPO meeting this morning and, uh, there was, uh, well, Phil Maxson retired, that's a long time, that'll be a loss for the county. But they were talking about this big blue machine that tests the roadways. And, and I think we want Mr. Carlisle to look into because it goes along the roadways, it tests the pavement, see how it's working. And then it even has a sprayer that can tell, you know, if during rain, if you will skid more on it. I mean, Mr. Dodd brought that up and, uh.
It's, uh, it, it was a, turn it on.
Excuse me, it was a highly interesting conversation when they showed the big blue machine that actually goes along the roads and it, it weighs so much that it puts a test on the concrete and that they actually can determine the, how strong the concrete remains and so forth on it. It's an interesting thing, but we definitely don't want to buy a big blue machine in the next budget. Uh, I'm sure they paid more for it. The other interesting thing, though, that came out, Bob, was the fact that, and we've asked for clarification from FDOT on this. Apparently, uh, the federal, FEC, the railroad, has determined that if in the process of doing a, doing, um, a road improvement, we add a lane to a crossing, that we have to remove a lane someplace else. If we add two lanes, we have to remove two lanes someplace else. And they're saying that that's their rule. And so the MPO asked for clarification from FDOT about what's the legal status of that and exactly who is telling the state what to do. Because we know for sure in the county, we're going to have at least two, maybe three situations. We're going to be adding two or more lanes to the railroad crossings as the road improvements are done in the next five years. And does that mean we have to give up crossings someplace to do that? And it's going to be an interesting discussion to get through in that process. And it was disheartening for me to hear that the railroad is saying if we add, we have to take away. But I didn't hear anybody say if we take away that we have to add someplace else. That wasn't part of the mix. That's kind of surprising to me that it wasn't part, so.
I think what I heard before, uh, years ago, working some of those things, is that if you were to, um, if you wanted to add a new crossing, you had to take one out.
They're saying now if you add a lane to a crossing.
They only had so many crossings allowed in a certain area.
Yeah, what they're saying now is if you add, for example, uh, they're going to increase the size of the five-ten crossing. So they're going to add two lanes to the five-ten crossing. So now someone in the county has to come up with two lanes of crossings that they can give away, they can give up on. Um, so which crossing goes away, you know? Same thing in Aviation Boulevard and other places with that. So it's, uh, it, it's an interesting argument when it comes back, when it comes up to that, so.
And another interesting thing they did is safety study, which showed over the last five years where the accidents were happening throughout the county, as well as then they had the fatalities. And it was clear to me when they had just the accidents, there were some cluster areas and, you know, it's on the GIS map.
I asked about that.
And we could look at that, so.
So Paul, that might be something we might want to think about doing. They, they put all this into GIS, so we can actually go look at the Sebastian streets and see where they, where, where, where there are clusters of accidents at street crossings that are within Sebastian's control and use that as part of our methodology on determining what to do with some of the streets. Uh, there were some really obvious clusters of accidents, both inside Sebastian and out. But I'm only worried about what's going on inside Sebastian right now, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, that's, that's it? All right, next item on our agenda is public hearings, item number ten A. Um, ten A is second reading and public hearing, ordinance number O dash twenty-three dash O one. Um, Mr. Mai.
An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation for land consisting of forty point two-three acres, more or less loaded, located south Sebastian River landing, east of vacant property, west and north of single-family development, providing for the extension of the corporate limits and boundaries thereof, providing for proposed land use and zoning classification, providing for Scrivener's errors, providing for conflict and severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a, a second reading. Uh, the first reading was on December fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two. It was set for a hearing, second hearing for today, this evening. This property is located next to Blue Water Bay, it's next to a forty-acre parcel that's already in the city. They want to combine this property into an eighty-acre tract once it's in the city. But I'll turn it over to Ms. Frazier for any, uh, technical data that you may need to make your decision on.
Good evening, council. As stated, this ordinance is the second reading of this ordinance. And, uh, the staff has found that the petition for annexation has been executed by the owners of the subject property and is consistent with chapter one seventy-one. Uh, we have also found that the proposal is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the city's twenty forty comprehensive plan. Um, staff recommends approval and adoption of this ordinance on second reading.
All right, uh, thank you guys so much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this? Um, is there anyone on Zoom?
No one has raised their hand.
Okay, public input's closed. Uh, Mr. Carlisle, do you have a final?
I do not unless you have additional questions from me or staff.
All right. All right, this hearing is closed, council.
Mr. Mayor, I make a, a motion to approve ordinance number O dash twenty-three dash zero one.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing nun, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Yes.
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 We still have her?
Councilmember Dixon. This, this is a vote on the Hess annexation?
She just fell out of the Zoom, she should be back in a moment.
Yeah, they're on the road, so I'm pretty sure it's going to go in and out, so.
Or maybe the kids on the bus are having a fistfight.
I don't know.
I hope not.
All right, um, if, if we don't get it back, uh, Mr. Mai, is it okay to cull it with what we have?
Yeah, you can, you can, uh, prove it with just the four votes without the.
So when we get it back, uh, we'll, we'll have her, but.
Well, if, if you.
We got four.
Yeah.
Are you saying you want to suspend the vote?
No, no, I want to keep it as is so we can move on without her vote.
Yeah, it'll just be a four, four vote with her being absent.
Okay, absolutely. All right, thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda is item ten B, second reading and public hearing, ordinance O dash twenty-three dash O two. Um, Mr. Mai.
An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida, approving a small-scale amendment to the comprehensive plan, future land use map, to designate a land use classification of LDR, low-density residential for land, with the current Indian River County land use designation of R rural residential for land consisting of forty point two-three acres, more or less located south of Sebastian River landing, east of vacant property, west and north of single-family development, authorizing findings and administrative actions, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for Scrivener's errors, providing an effective date, and providing an adoption schedule.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, this was, uh, the first reading was held on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three for this future land use map. It is a small-scale land use map, so it doesn't require quite the review that something as large like the Graves Brothers, if it's fifty acres or less. Um, I believe Ms. Frazier has some technical dat- data that she would like to go over with you for, to help you make your decision on this.
Good evening, council. Uh, as stated, this is a forty point two-three acre property that's south of Sebastian River landing subdivision and east of a vacant property. These are both already contiguous with the city. Um, it is known as the Hess property and the county, in the county, it is currently land used as R rural residential. The property owner is requesting that it is changed to LDR, low-density residential, simultaneously with the annexation of the property. The applicant proposes to rezone the property to PUDR as part of the entire eighty-acre development um, in, at a later date. The, this was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission in January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and they recommended unanimous approval of this request, as did the city council on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. It is a small-scale amendment, thus it will be sent to the state following adoption of the land use, just for their notification. Uh, staff recommends approval and adoption of this ordinance on second reading, thank you.
All right. Um, do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak on this? Seeing nun, do we have someone on Zoom?
Nobody's raised their hand.
All right, public input's closed. Um, Mr. Carlisle, do you have a final?
I, I have nothing further unless you have additional questions for staff.
All right, we'll go ahead and close that, council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, move for approval of ordinance dash O dash twenty-three dash O two, the second reading.
Second.
Second. You second? Okay.
All right, do we have a motion and a second? Do we have any other discussion? And Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Did you call me?
Call Kelly, she's on the line.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Dixon.
Sorry, guys, I'm on a bus, but fifty-four graders, and we went through a dead zone, so I apologize for missing the last one. Um, I, I say yes, and I'll unmute.
Councilmember Dixon, we're voting on the Hess, uh, future land use amendment, do you?
Yes, I, I caught on to Mr. Mai reading about this one, but I, I missed the tail end of the last one, so my apologies.
I can't quite make you out, but do you vote in favor of it?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor Nun?
Yes.
And Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, very good. Um, okay. Next item, um, we have on our agenda is item eleven A, Mr. Dodd.
No, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Did you say there were some changes on that?
Yes, sir, I, yeah. I asked to add an item to, uh, to this and, um, just as a bit of background, I, I asked some questions about the actual solid waste franchise fee and how we have basically approved that. And I'm wanting to make sure that, I'm not, I'm not overly comfortable that, that, um, that it, it only appears within the waste management contract. So I would like to present to council a motion for the, um, the, the waste, the solid waste franchise fee. Um, and then at the same time, direct the city manager and city attorney to do some research and determine whether there's any other city documents by which we may have approved this fee and determine if there's any actions we need to take other than what we take within this contract. I would hate for us to approve something within the waste management contract and find out three weeks from now or six weeks from now or six months from now that we've got a ordinance out there in which we established this fee and we didn't modify that ordinance. So, um, that, that, this is purely a housekeeping thing to make sure we get it straight. My proposal is, uh, that we assess a solid waste management, a solid waste, uh, collection franchise fee of three percent from July one, two thousand twenty-three until October first of two thousand twenty-four. And then it goes to zero percent after October first of two thousand twenty-four, that we continue to assess a six percent solid waste franchise fee on, uh, non-residential accounts, uh, beginning as seven one, two thousand twenty-two, within the, the waste management contract that's in the second item on this. And that thirdly, we direct the city manager and city attorney to do some research and determine whether there's any other items that we need to correct based on this, this particular fee structure. I, I, I can't find anybody that can tell me what may have been done years ago to establish this franchise fee. And I'd hate for us to find that there's some ordinance sitting out there that says this and that we're not adhering to that ordinance. So that's the, that's my recommendation on this. It does change the items that are within this contract. We can do it by modifying the contract as we approve it or don't approve it, whichever we do on the next item, so. Uh, so that, I'm, I'm doing that in this form of a motion.
One minute, so, um, first of all, we have the, um, we have this item on the table. The first thing we need to do is take it off.
No, this is a new, this is new.
This is not.
The, the next item we have to pull off the table, but this is, this is new. This isn't part of that original, that original stuff, this is new.
My, my question is, if I may.
Yeah.
My question is, I think I have an understanding of what your thought process is, but without us going through the item that we haven't pulled off the table yet, I don't know if it'll make sense to anybody else.
Okay, so, um, I, I can, I can move this, I, I, I have no problem, uh, asking to move this to the end. I just want to make sure we take this action separate from the waste management contract.
Okay.
So that we're protected for potentially from, uh, somebody, there are a lot of people that are not happy with what we may or may not do with waste management. And I want to make sure that we have our ducks in the row and we've done the appropriate management steps to, to protect the city within this. So I have no problem doing this after the fact with the waste management. I understand what you're talking about, Mr. Vice Mayor, about, because you, you can see my logic in that move, so. So, um.
I think I've had similar discussion with the city manager about.
Yeah.
The fee, so I have an idea what you're probably talking about, I just.
Okay, so.
I think maybe it would make more sense if we brought this item off the table first, discussed it.
Okay, so I will, I will then, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, that we move item one under this discussion item to, uh, to item three. Does that work, okay?
Second that, yeah.
All right.
You know, if I need a vote on that.
Item one to item three.
Yeah, what, the one I just brought up, we just shift it to the end of the, and then we can take the others off the table and talk about them.
So what, we, we added an item A one to, uh, discuss the fee and now we're asking to move item A one to be A, to technically be A two after the solid waste discussion.
Yeah.
So let's, I think we should, if we agree with that.
So you're talking about going after one on the list that we have, but before two?
Yeah, move it, move it to, move it to, um.
After the discussion of the solid waste agreement.
Yeah.
Right.
That makes sense to you guys?
Yeah, okay, so that's be in the third position here.
Correct.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, uh, so next thing we have is to, um, we have an item on the table that we need to take off.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to remove item A two, uh, the solid waste collection services agreement for RFP twenty-two dash O seven and remove it from the table for discussion.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second? All right, to move it from the table. Um, we'll call Madam Clerk?
Oh, yes.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon? Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, Mr. Mai?
You want me to read the ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay. An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida, granting an exclusive franchise agreement for residential and commercial solid waste collection to Waste Management, Inc., providing penalties for violation, providing for sunset of existing commercial providers, providing for conflicts, providing for Scrivener's errors, and effective date.
Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, Mayor, the first item is actually, the, the one you removed from the table was a, a solid waste contract. At the March twenty-second meeting, um, it was voted on by the council to, uh, rescind the vote to approve the universal collection of sanitation for solid waste for the city of Sebastian and direct the city manager, myself, to go and negotiate with Waste Management for, uh, collection of fees and, and how we can operate. Now, I also met with Ms. Jordan from the tax collector's office on billing and I've met with. Now, I also met with Ms. Jordan from the Tax Collector's Office on billing, and I've met with, uh, the property appraisers getting some information, but in the meetings that we had with Waste Man, Waste Management, the contract you have before you today is they, they agree to do the billing for, um, July through October of 2024, and they would, the city wouldn't incur any debt under that process, but they want to be able to keep 3% of the franchise fees to cover any debt that they may incur for that time period. So they would bill quarterly versus what we were going to have to do is to get with the property appraiser and the tax collector to bill, and then we would have all that debt, which was a concern of council, and rightfully so. So Waste Management has agreed to do the billing, do the quarterly billing, starting in July and through October, and they would, um, obviously take the debt, and we would also use code enforcement to go after those that do not pay their fees, so that we could terminate their service until they get caught up on their, on their billing account with Waste Management. So those are some pretty significant changes, um, that we think you would, would want to consider, especially since debt was one of the number-one concerns of council. And Waste Management is here, yeah, to answer questions, and so is, uh, the tax collector.
Mr. Mayor, I have a disclosure I'd like to make, though.
Yeah?
I know that Waste Management, uh, with each of us individually, and I'm not disclosing that, but I was in a meeting with Mr. Carlisle and Waste Management. It wasn't intended. I was just walking by the conference room and was called in, so I was in a meeting with Mr. Carlisle and Waste Management. I just wanted to disclose that, uh, that that took place.
All right, all right, thank you. Um, anything else, Mr. Carlisle?
Uh, no, I mean, it's, I think it's pretty substantial changes to the contract. I think it's, uh, I think it's well-intentioned by Waste Management to, to make this offer to the city. I think it, uh, I think it's beneficial if you choose to stick with the universal service. I think this is, this is a great compromise.
All right. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this?
Yes, sir, come forward.
Again, my name is Martin Steiger. As I said before, you know, I've moved here, I, I've, I've enjoyed some of the freedoms, and, uh, I know a number of people who've had, uh, the services and their garbage being picked up, and I know a lot of people that have elected not to have that done for one reason or another. I know, like, in my community, there's a number of people that own property that don't live in the state except maybe two or three months of the year. They, they call them snowbirds. So, uh, based on what I understand now, you're gonna, uh, require everybody, even if they don't use the service, don't want the service, to have to pay for the service of the people that do want it, and I, I just don't feel that's fair, and, uh, to, to the people, especially the ones that don't live here, three or four months of the year, maybe they're here at that. But I know a lot of people who already have the services, but because of the situation with the cost of everything going up, now have decided to not use that service, to use the recycling centers, which all of us already pay for through our taxes, through the county, which, uh, in fact, in the situation, my personal situation is, when I first came here, I lived out in, uh, Vero Lake Estates, and they wouldn't even come out there to pick up garbage. So I had to go and use the recycling center out there. And then when I changed and I went into another community within Sebastian limits, uh, my wife said, "Well, well, let's call them up and we'll get the service." I called them up and they said, "There aren't enough people there, and we don't provide service for your location." All right, so I was forced there again to, to stay on, uh, what I was doing when I lived in Vero Lake Estates. And now with the cost of everything going up, except my income, and I know a number of people personally who have had the services, and because of the increases in everything going around, they say, "Well, they heard that they were going to double the cost of the, the garbage pickup and, uh, and get less services, uh, because they were getting pickup twice a week, and now it's going to be," from what I understand, they're, they're proposing that we accept a pickup of only once a week. They're gonna, uh, they elected to have my town council and my, my town to do their billing and collections for them without being reimbursed for that. Generally, you know, when somebody has a business and they want somebody to collect money, they pay them for collecting the money for them, and in this case, they're, they're demanding that we have to do their collection, uh, for them, and we're forcing people who, at this point, have decided not to, to take the service because the less service, double the payment, and they could utilize the recycling center, which they pay for automatically through their, uh, county taxes. And now I'm, I'm hearing that, uh, the best thing that we could do is everybody has to pay, whether you want it or not, and I know that even people, uh, that have more money than I have have not elected and do the, the same thing I do with the recycling center. And, uh, I just feel it's, uh, it's a service that was being paid for individually, and I don't think it's, uh, the town should take it on as their responsibility, and why they're doing it, I don't know. I don't know how we got involved with, uh, an outside carding company that we should have to, all of a sudden, they're asking you to, to do the service for them. It's their business. It shouldn't be the, the town's business for that, especially when we have the recycling centers that everybody pays for as it is. And, uh, I don't know, it seems like, uh, everybody I've talked to, and like I said, I know a lot of people who decided not to take it and were going to do like, uh, like I have been in, like I said, I have neighbors that do the same thing, that could afford to even pay it, but they don't elect not to do that. I, I myself, I go to, I go by, uh, recycling centers all the time during the week, going about my regular business, shopping or whatever, and it's, uh, very convenient. I just go one block or two blocks off from my route, and I take care of it. And, uh, like I said, uh, based on my income, I, I don't want it, and I, I appreciate it if you reconsider this, or maybe even put it to a vote for the people in the town to see what their feelings are, because it's, I think, uh, I know a lot of people don't realize that people like in my position, I, I have to consider everything when it comes right down to what I have, how much money I have, and what I can spend it on, and this is not one thing I'm going to start paying for that I don't think I need. And I appreciate if you reconsider this, and also, I understand there was only one bid on this, your service?
That's right.
And it's like, and, uh, who did the negotiating? How did they come up with, "Okay, you're going to do our billing for us for free, and you're not, we're going to double what we charge you, and we're only going to give you half the service that we offered you last year to the public?" Uh, you know, I, I was in real estate for a number of years.
Right, I hear you, sir, but, um, hang on just a second, sir.
Yes.
Please refrain from the, all the clapping and yelling. We need to be able to hear everyone and understand what they're talking about, so thank you so much.
May I respond to that specific thing?
Hang on just a second.
I, I, I think, I think, uh, to be respectful of everybody, I, I think it would be, uh, respectful of the, the council to maybe decide to reconsider, see if there's any other offers, and at least maybe even give the people a chance to, uh, uh, vote on it. Especially, like I said, the people that don't come down here but two or three months a year. I don't think that's fair, that, that we should force an expense onto them that they don't even need or want. And I think it would be nice of the council to take in consideration the people that they represent and give us an opportunity, at least put our voices into it, and I, I understand, a lot of people have done that, and I think that's why we're, we're, they've come to you because people have decided not to do that. I would, I would be, wouldn't be surprised if there's a couple of thousand people in the town that have the, the services now, and because they've doubled the price.
Um, I, thank you for your time, but your time is up. We have other people. I'm sorry, but, um, your time has expired, so.
But it would be nice if you would at least give the people in the community a chance to vote on it.
Yes, sir, thank you for your input.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
May I talk real quick?
Yeah, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing, because I, there is some confusion. The city put out an RFP, which is a request for proposal. Three companies, Republic, Waste Pro, and Waste Management, said they responded and said they were going to bid. Three companies responded, two said they were not going to bid because they felt like they needed more information that they weren't being given. I spoke to all three companies. The third company submitted a complete bid, and that was Waste Management. It wasn't that we didn't get more bids, just the other two companies that could have serviced this area or felt they could service this area did not submit a bid. Uh, we can't go out then and start talking to people and asking them to bid. That's illegal. We can't do that. We went through the RFP process, and that's how, we keep it transparent and no back, you know, room deals happening. That's how we keep things legal, but I just wanted that clear. We did go out and put it out for proposal for all of these companies to see. Three companies bid, only, our three companies responded, but only one company submitted a bid, and that was Waste Management. That was why they were the selected contract. Thank you. That was all I wanted on that.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, come on up, sir.
Good evening, Council. Nathan McCollum, 50-year resident of Sebastian. Before I get started, please don't count it against my time. I have to recognize Councilmember Dodd. Uh, I pride myself on knowing government and how it works pretty well, but even Councilmember Dodd found an issue with the, we can't do it to 2024 I wasn't even aware of. So I congratulate you on that, and I appreciate your diligence in checking that out. So with that, I'd like to point out a statute that's in the Florida statutes that I've consulted with a couple of people with. Um, the, for the attorney's benefit, it's statute number 197.3632, which deals with the enforcement of non-advalorem tax assessments. And that is what this is, is a non-advalorem tax assessment, the universal. For the benefit of everybody, when we talk universal, we're talking about this is going to be on your tax bill. This is going to be a mandatory for every citizen in the C, City of Sebastian to have it. When we talk about subscription, that is voluntary. That's what we currently are using now. The statute I'm pointing to now deals with the universal or mandatory. Um, and I was aware that this was here when we went back to the stormwater issue, when we had the non-advalorem put, stormwater put on the tax bill. Let me read section 4B, and this is again dealing with what we're talking about, a non-advalorem tax. "At least 20 days prior to the public hearing," which we're supposed to be having a public hearing about the assessment, not necessarily what we're talking about right now, "the local government shall notice the hearing by first-class United States mail and by publication in newspaper generally circulated within each county contained in the bound, or municipalities contained in the boundaries of local government." Simply means that everybody that's going to get taxed with the, this trash fee is supposed to get a letter describing the cost, how much it's going to be, what it's for, and that you will have a tax certificate put against your property if you don't pay the trash bill portion of this, uh, non-advalorem assessment. We haven't done any of that. The city's not done any of that at all. We've not had a public hearing about this. No mail, no letters have been sent out. And the reason I bring this up is because, for whatever reason, included in the negotiation with Waste Management and the city manager, they included in the contract that we're going to have a tax assessment in 2024. It's right in there in section 9.1, and it says, "The city will bill residential units effective October 1, 2024 by adding an assessment to the annual property tax bill." You've already made up your mind with this contract before we even follow the law. Now, there's a severability clause in this contract also, and an inline court, which is going to be, I'll give you the numbers here just to make sure, 16.3, 16.4, governing local law and severability, which is a standard boilerplate language in any contract the city will have. You can't violate laws according to the contract you're looking at right now. Now, I'm not going to, I don't expect the attorney to give any answers tonight. We're going to have another hearing on the 26th if this goes ahead tonight, but I wanted to point that out, because I've talked to a couple of people that have had experience with this, and I'm not, I'm not a lawyer or anything like that, but they found the language in the contract and the law, if we proceeded troubling was the word that was used. I don't know what that means. Maybe the attorney knows what that means, but he said troubling. So anyway, I just point that out to you, that the contract that you signed tonight, because it was, it was decided to put the assessments in the contract, you may very well be violating Florida law. It's something that'll easily be challenged, and then that becomes a bigger problem. The franchise fee, um, the question I had about the franchise fee in the contract, it says that 3% of the franchise tax, we'll call it, is going to the city, and 3% is going to Waste Management for delinquent accounts. Is, would that be correct? Yes. I don't believe 3% going to Waste Management is going to be anywhere near enough to cover their delinquent accounts. I don't know, so my question with that would be, if it goes over the 3%, are we liable to pay them more money, or are they just going to say 3% and that's it? And I don't, again, I don't expect answers, we, because I don't mean to put the staff on the spot here, but if we get answers tonight or the next meeting, that's fine, but that's something that needs, needs to be done. The universal system, and I want to go on record again saying that I am not for universal. I am not for mandatory putting on a tax. For those of us that have, we've talked about it before, if this goes on the tax bill, your escrow accounts, if you have a mortgage, are going up. If you don't pay the tax bill correctly, you're going to have a tax certificate put against your house. If you are somebody that's renting and looking for affordable housing, we just added $240 to your cost of the rental by doing universal or mandatory. Again, I'm hoping that if we do anything, we'll just stay with the voluntary. The last thing I want to mention, and I emailed each of the council people with, uh, information about this. One of the things that I was hoping that staff would have a presentation about it tonight, but I didn't see one, what if the city starts doing its own garbage collection? When we, at the last meeting, we had...
Uh, Nick, can you hold on for a second?
Sure.
And his time is over. Do you all mind if we give him?
Mr. Mayor, I, let the gentleman speak.
I'm sorry, it only take me a couple minutes. It was because I complimented Mr. Dodd, so. No, um, one of the things, when we were talking about, there were cities, Port St. Lucie, and I forget how many different cities were mentioned, but one city that was never mentioned was the City of Vero Beach, which is only 15 miles down the road. The City of Vero Beach, for 50, 60 years, has been doing their own garbage collection. They have their own utility system. They do all the collections twice a week for $16.85, or $16.45 a month. They do not put that on their tax bill. They put it on their utility bill when they bill for water and sewer. There's an item for trash. Not only does the City of Vero Beach do it that way, so does the City of Orlando, and so does Palm Coast, Florida. Orange County and Miami-Dade put it on your tax bill, but they also collect recycling. They do everything, and they give you bulk collection. Uh, Orange County, which is where Orlando is, $245, and they do twice a week everything. We're talking about Waste Management doing once a week for $240, and so it is well worth, I think, the city to look at doing this themselves. Some cities have fire departments, some cities have sewer and water, some cities have garbage collection. Maybe it's time that we look at this, because if you're going to put this on the bill, on the tax bill, it gives this council control over the entire process now. We come to you if there's an increase in, in the rates, or if there's some, some concern, and that's the way it should be. If it's going to be on the tax bill, let us be able to come to you. Do not become a collection agency for a private company, which is exactly what you're going to be doing if you assess this and then you turn over all the money to Waste Management. I thank you for your time tonight. Uh, one other thing I wanted to mention, there's been some discussion about surveys, and I heard somebody say 67% of some surveys said there was, everybody was in favor. There was a, a private media agency here in town that did their own survey with their own customers on the email list, and it said it was 80-something percent of people wanted this. That's not a scientific survey. If you want to sign up on their email list, that's great. That's up to you. But please don't consider any kind of private survey as a legitimate survey, because that's not, I was never asked a question. I never received a survey, and I've lived here 50 years. I've served where you are, and I know that. You've heard from Ms. Coy last time we were here, and myself, and you all have been on the council for a while. When Ms. Coy and I, we tackled many different assess, um, annexation things. One of the things that we always respected about each other on councils, when we had something that had a lot of questions, there were no clear answers, we took our time. We researched everything. we took our time. We researched everything. And we made sure that when we had all the information, we took care of everything. I would highly suggest you look at, maybe it's time the city does this. The Vero Beach, uh, receives two point nine million dollars in their assessments for everything that they do. And that's the city of Vero Beach. Waste Management, it's about two point eight million, or maybe a little closer to two point nine million. We're only getting half the service, one time a week with what's being proposed. I ask you to, uh, consider the things I brought up to you tonight and I thank you for your part.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, sir. No clapping, please. How many? Really? I'm like, let's just have some decorum and listen. I've asked politely that we do not have the clapping and yelling, so. I, I don't wanna be mean about it, but this is how we have to go about get our business done. So, sir, you're up next. Your name for the record, please.
Yes. Mayor, members of council, my name is Frank Holtower. I live on Malo Scrub Way. I'm here with some neighbors and I'm speaking for myself and my wife. The reason I'm here is much about what the prior speaker said, but the data that I've seen so far supporting this, at least one part of it, is that only four hundred residences turn the system on, turn the system off when they come and go, snowbirds generally. On our street of seventeen homes, there's only one person that does this. So I'm just giving you my observations. There are three for sure out of seventeen who, we take our trash to the transfer station, which we pay for in our taxes to the county. I think there's another one that does that, but I'm gonna use my numbers conservatively and say, I know for sure there's three out of seventeen. That's approaching eighteen percent. It is eighteen percent or close to one in five. If we take eighteen percent and apply it to the homes in Sebastian, that's a lot of homes. I'm only gonna take half that and say nine or ten percent. Last census showed twelve, twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-five residences in Sebastian. If ten percent of those folks are not using the system like folks on my street, take their trash to the transfer station, which is already paid for out of our taxes, that's a lot of people who are already using another system. Unlike police, fire, public health, storm sewer, EMS, libraries, there is a viable option for our trash disposal in this community. We already pay the county. We drop it off there once a week. We don't really see why we should be forced to pay a fee or a tax. That's a tomato, tomato in my mind. It's a tax. It's going on my tax bill. There are a lot of folks who go to the transfer station just by observation alone. We've had our house not far down Main Street here and just off for twelve years. The folks going to the transfer station, I'm guessing, has increased twenty to twenty-five percent in the last two or three years. So there are a lot of people in our community that use that service. Unless you have any questions, I thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you so much, sir. Next.
Nelson McCollum, five-five-four, Gossemer Wingway. There's no need to be mandating unnecessary, non-essential services. Trash pickup is no different than cable TV, car washes, golf memberships, or lawn care service. People who willfully subscribe can simply choose to pay twenty-eight dollars a month and carry on as usual or cancel their service. Some subscribers would rather make neighbors who now choose to pay zero dollars a month to start paying twenty dollars a month, so they will only have to pay twenty dollars a month instead of twenty-eight. This is all about getting the subscribers an eight dollar a month reduction at the expense of non-subscribing neighbors who will see a twenty dollar a month new cost added to their budgets they don't want or need. If you want the service, just pay for it yourself, just as we do now. Cities should not be in the business of forcefully recruiting new customers for a private business that provides a completely unnecessary, non-essential service. I mentioned this at my annual HOA meeting on March twenty-third and no one knew what I was talking about. Free choice, non-subscribers had no idea about the tax increase that was coming their way. Hurry up and vote one day after two workshops were crammed into one day. This is being done to get this through before people know what's going on, just like Mister McPartland illustrated at the last meeting. City manager withholds information from the public so he can sway the outcome in a certain direction. Is he working for the residents or Waste Management? Whose idea was it to even bid mandatory universal? There was no public outcry for it. The five P M, five P M workshop I attended did not have one person speak in favor of mandatory universal trash pickup. When the city manager presented this idea, he named off several cities in the area that had mandatory universal service, but he failed to mention any other free choice subscription cities. And most of all, he failed to mention what our nearest neighboring city, Vero Beach, does for trash collection. Vero does it theirselves at cost for sixteen forty-five a month for two pickups a week. If we did that and just did it once a week, maybe we can do it for eight or nine dollars a month. Why wasn't this cheaper option also presented on your survey? Why wasn't the zero dollar a month do-it-yourself option on your survey? It seems to me the city manager has done everything he can to steer all city residents to get locked into mandatory Waste Management service. Waste Management would love this as it also takes away from them the problem of delinquent non-payers. They currently charge a dollar seventy-five per pickup with a seventeen percent delinquency rate, which equates to actually receiving a dollar forty-five per pickup overall. Now they would receive five dollars per pickup with no delinquencies. Sweet deal for them, a three hundred and fifty percent price increase per pickup and to get paid by a hundred percent of their customers. If the ci, if the option of the city doing its own trash collection is further investigated, I would ask that another city staff member run the numbers because I don't trust any price estimate the city manager will bring back. His figures will be high to steer us back to Waste Management, just like he has done at every step up to this point. Mister Dodd, you said at March, at the Marth H. meeting, you didn't care about those people who can afford to pay but don't want to. I want you to know, Mister Dodd, that I would care about you if I subscribed to Comcast and then you were forced to subscribe to Comcast because my bill went up and I wanted a cheaper rate. This trash issue is no different. I will get up here and correct every time I hear the half-truth that mandatory universal service will save some people a hundred dollars a year. It will save current subscribers a hundred dollars off their upcoming price increase, but it will cost all current non-subscribers a new additional two hundred and forty dollar a year tax expense for something they don't want, use, or need. Hear this clearly. No subscriber, no subscriber's trash bill is going down from the current level if we get mandatory universal Waste Management service. Stop misleading the public. If city collects trash on its own, we might get a real actual cost reduction of a hundred and twenty dollars, as was shared earlier. Stop this silliness and leave the system as it is. It's not your job to find Waste Management new customers. It's your job to keep our taxes low and let people choose how they want to spend their money.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
All right. Thank you so much, sir. Uh, next, come on up, sir.
Ryan Mather, Autumn Terrace. Council Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank Ms. Kathy at, uh, City Clerk. I called her and she said she'd email me some hard, uh, some stuff. And I told her I didn't have a Wi-Fi or a printer. So she put a, um, hard copy package together that I picked up here. So years ago, everybody knows that, uh, the state mandated that landfills had to be, uh, adjusted for recycling. And the county reacted by the transfer station system. Since we're non-ad valor, valorem fee, it's a fee, not a tax. Poor people pay the same amount as people well off. So, and every single county residence, including Sebastian residence, are paying this non-ad valorem fee and it's gone up every year that I've lived here since ninety-six. Obviously, uh, a, a quick answer now that you've taken item, uh, eleven A one off tonight with a vote. Am I correct?
No.
We brought it off the table.
We brought it off the table.
Right, right. Off the table. So that means two weeks from tonight, there will be, uh, eleven A two?
No.
No. Not, not until you vote? So there's possibility that could or could not happen tonight?
Well, I don't know yet. We have to, we, we call the vote on things.
Okay, that's what I was, so you will vote on that later on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, finishing up. Basically, you know, a universal, uh, is, uh, we don't need another universal, uh, non-ad valorem, uh, tax. We do have the water and of course the county goes up every year. And once we're in non-ad valorem, it, it just goes up and up and up and whether it would be the cost of, uh, living CPI. And, uh, I'd like a choice of, uh, subscription because I also, two hundred and forty dollars a year pays, uh, buy a lot of gas when you're going that direction anyways to pull over every day except the Wednesdays. They're all closed on Wednesdays. To drop off your yard waste and garbage and stuff. And, uh, therefore, subscription is the only way to go versus, uh, universal. That's my opinion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to come forward, sir?
I don't wanna be redundant, but these gentlemen do that.
Wait till you get to the mic, sure.
Okay. My name is Carl Kelly. I've been here twenty years. I brought in, uh, uh, Francis and Jean back in oh-four and oh-three. When I moved in, the person I purchased from told me that I was responsible for my waste. I talked to someone last week and she said that the town was responsible for recycling, not Waste Management. I said, "Well, Waste Management makes four pickups at my door a week. Two are garbage, trash, whatever. One is recycle and the other is yard waste. So are you telling me that I'm paying them for doing something that they're not responsible for? The town is responsible for recycle?" Couldn't give me an answer. So all I wanna say here tonight is, just like the other gentleman reiterated, it's been a voluntary thing for the individual homeowners to take care of their waste. As far as I'm concerned, it should stay that way. Pay for your pickup, no taxes, no town responsibilities. Bad enough we have to pay for water. Pay for your, uh, 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 waste taken away. I've been here for twenty years. Each time I leave town to go maybe back up to Maine, I call Waste Management and I say, "Hey, I'm gonna be gone for three months." Okay, we'll shut down the pickup. Nothing's picked up. When I come back, I have already received a credit because I paid before I left, depending upon what time of the year it is. They owe me money. Let the people, the owners, deal with Waste Management. Now, they're gonna be convenient, they're gonna be nice and, and give us a break on continuing to handle the billing until we decide that we're gonna change the system. Everything's going up. Individuals have to pay. We'll pay the, the extra five dollars or whatever it is, but that's the individual responsibility. You want the waste taken away? Pay for it. I think we oughta just null and void all this taxes and the town picking up the waste. And there only needs to be one garbage, one waste pickup a week. There doesn't need to be two. There should be one pickup of waste, one pickup of recycle, and one pickup of yard waste. That's all we need. All this other is just another way to make more money and, and, and take, take advantage of the people. That's it for me.
All right. Thank you so much, sir. Is there, uh, anyone else?
After this.
Sharon, good evening. Sharon Matthews, Sebastian. I, I need some clarification. Are we on eleven A? So what's on the table right now is the transmittal?
No, no, the, the, um, the garbage pickup.
I understand that, but the transmittal?
The contract.
The contract. So what, what the contract says is that staff is recommending that city council reconsider's voting to award twenty-two oh seven Waste Management Universal once a week garbage. So is a vote gonna be taken again on whether we're universal or subscription or we're just going by this with universal?
Mister Mayor, may I?
Yeah, go ahead, Mister Dodd.
We, we, we took an action on that, um, three meetings, two meetings ago.
Okay.
And I, I became aware of some additional information that had me concerned that I voted the wrong way on that possibly. And so I, at our last meeting, recalled that vote.
Okay.
And, um, that wa, that's why it's on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Is because I recalled that vote because there were some financial considerations that I felt very uncomfortable with. So we are rehearing, it's a good way to say it, I guess. We're rehearing what we did two meetings ago. Okay?
Okay.
And at two meetings ago, we voted three to two for the universal, but we're rehearing that tonight as a result of my request to recall that. Parliamentarily wise, since I voted in the majority on it, I could legally ask at the very next opportunity, whether it be that day or at the next meeting, to ask to rehear that vote. It's, it's called, uh, recall the last motion.
Sure.
And so that's what I did and that's why it's on the agenda tonight, is for that reason.
I, and I followed all of that, but this was just misleading that it's, it looks more like it.
That's the transmittal. It's written by somebody else.
Okay. Cause when you get into the narrative of it, it doesn't look like there's even a topic of revo, okay.
Okay.
So, and then the franchise fees coming up because I believe.
That, that's something I asked to add and we will be discussing that at some point in time here.
So I will hold off then until we get to the tran, the franchise fees.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here? Yes, sir. Come forward.
Bill Flynn, I'm on Main Street. I have a question for you, Mister Jones. When sixty-six percent of the people that want to bid on your contract say that they need more information, is that an indication that perhaps the request for bid was miscommunicated or not properly, uh, put out to your, to the people bidding?
What are you talking about? Sixty-six percent of what now?
The two people, the, the two other companies that wanted to bid, they asked for more information that, that the vice mayor was, was bringing up. They said that they needed more information. If they needed more information, then that's an indication to me that, that the bid wasn't properly submitted to the people that wanted to bid on it.
Right. I, I didn't, I didn't speak to them specifically about that.
I spoke to both of those companies. Both of those companies used that as their reasoning for not doing it. Both of those companies were given every bit of information we had on the residential situation. We did not have information on the commercial aspect. There was nothing in the contract to give that from Waste Management. Uh, in the new contract, there is something in there about, uh, us having residential and commercial numbers from the vendor that we have. Uh, but in the original contract, there was nothing in there. No requirement of Waste Management to give up what was considered proprietary information. Uh, they would have had to go do what other companies would do is put feet on the ground and go talk to commercial entities to find out what they wanted to do about their garbage.
And, and can I add to that?
All that information was given to them, but that was the reason they gave on the RFP.
Okay. And, and if I may add to that, if, if you've-
If I may add to that, if you paid, which I'm sure the rest of them, but I know I have done a large amount of research into the solid waste problems around the Treasure Coast in the last couple of months, and quite frankly, they don't want to bid on it anymore. Waste Pro was fired by the city of Fort St. Lucie for bad performance, and they brought in an outside vendor that I don't think is doing anybody else on the Treasure Coast. These companies have had major issues. I haven't heard anything positive from any city official, and I'm exposed to a lot of them through my relationship with the regional league of cities and the Florida league of cities. I haven't heard anything positive about any trash hauler. They all tell me that the majority of their complaints are about trash. And so it's not, this isn't, this isn't unique to waste management, and it isn't unique to Sebastian. These issues are major issues for every municipality within the region that we operate in. And the rates that are being charged under this particular contract, the rates that were quoted are not gigantically out of line at all with what's being quoted other places and what other places are paying for their waste stuff. All of a sudden, trash is a big item that people... We think it's the First Amendment, it's not, it's trash. So, you know, and I hear the same thing from all the other local officials that I talk to, is that the biggest number of complaints they receive is trash hauling. So I don't think they refused to bid because they didn't get enough information, I think they refused to bid because they didn't want to.
Well, I can speak to some of the people thinking that waste management is gouging people coming from the fleet maintenance part. Everything to do with trucking, everything to do with labor is going up, fuel's going up. We've seen our parts increase approximately seventy-five percent over the last twenty-four months. So the costs are going up. But on the other hand, our current residents are struggling, and I'm willing to pay a little extra so the people that can afford it, that want to go to the transfer station, can go to the transfer station. And that's where I sit. And I thank you, gentlemen, 'cause I know it's a difficult situation. Half the town seems like they're gonna hate you no matter what you do, and I appreciate you all and the time that you donate.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, sir. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir, please come forward.
I thought I was...
Name, please, sir.
Oh, yes, Terry McKinn, Mill Drive, Sebastian. I thought I was keeping up with this process until about ten minutes ago. Can I ask, two weeks ago, two meetings ago, there was a vote to either go subscription or mandatory. Then everything happened, and the vote was completed. Do I understand that when you finish tonight, there will still be a vote for mandatory or subscription?
Yes, there will be, once we get done, yes.
Okay. So it'll be up to the board to decide. And do I understand that if it is subscription, the best price you can come up with is about twenty-seven dollars a month?
Roughly.
Okay.
Yeah, with the franchise fees added along.
And if you go mandatory, the best price you'll come up with is about nineteen dollars a month, plus franchise.
Twenty, twenty bucks.
Yes.
So the real option tonight will be what you vote on, either subscription or mandatory?
Correct.
Either nineteen dollars a month or twenty-seven dollars. And at twenty-seven, anyone who doesn't, who wants to go to the trash station can.
Yes.
And I would just add one more thing. I was at the trash station this week, and every single bin was overflowing, it was all over the place, the place was backed up, and there was a guy screaming at everybody to put the cardboard in the right place. That's the situation right now at the transfer station. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, sir. We're gonna go ahead and take a ten-minute recess, if you all ready. I think Bob's...
I gotta go to that one.
Yeah. All right, ten-minute recess, we'll be back. We're gonna move on with the item in front of us. Is there any more public input on this item? I think we had that. Is there anyone on Zoom for it?
We have one, two with their hands raised, actually, several with their hands raised.
Okay, let's bring in the first one.
Hello, Ms. Coy, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, listen, here we are again. Something didn't go as planned. Surprise, surprise. But a lot has been going unplanned lately, so this doesn't surprise me very much. It's just another thing in a long list of things that did not get off to a good start. You've been hearing from a lot of people who are upset by this decision, and since things didn't go as planned the last time with the last vote that you took, what's the rush now? I think we need to go back and start this process all over again, and consider looking at doing our own trash, like Bureau Beach. That seems to be a potential option. I understand that Bureau might even be making money on this process, but I think that needs to get looked at. And let me just ask the council this. When this initially went out for RFP, is it possible? I kind of remember hearing one of the council members mentioning this, that the reason, one of the reasons that no one else returned a bid, other than Waste Management, was because we were on subscription service, and no one else wanted to be involved in that. Well, now that you've decided that we're not gonna be subscription, we have no idea if anyone's interested. So I think it needs to go back out to bid. Yeah, I understand everything's gone up, but this needs a relook all the way around. Now, you don't need to make a decision tonight. We waited and waited and waited, which, we should've been doing this a year ago. One year ago, we should've been doing this, having these discussions and setting this up. We failed to do that. And it's sad to see that we're in this position. We're starting to look foolish. Too much is going wrong. Anyway, I think you need to start it all over. Send out another RFP, 'cause now you got all, everybody all confused about what's going on and who's paying what and subscription versus non. Start over, have the work chops, and let's do it right this time, from start to finish, not this change, 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 change. And oh, by the way, it was good to see Nate McCollum. Nate, I don't know if you're still there, I can't see if you're still in the audience, but old home week. And Nate's right, we used to have lots and lots of meetings with the public. I don't know what's happened to that. But clearly, there's a lot of misunderstanding right now, and you can make it right by going back and starting over, not this change, 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 change stuff, so that we're all confused. Just a suggestion. Hope we get it right this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Hello, Ms. Reed, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Outstanding. My first time on Zoom. Um, sorry, I could not be in the room this evening. Um, I have some issues with the Waste Management as well. And I am going to go ahead and state that I am still in support of subscriber one time a week service. But with all of the voting and stuff from the past, just when I was acclimating myself, to the addition of my trash collection to the tax roll and realizing that I am not only paying for my collection, but through additional fees, I get to ensure that I participate in paying for the folks who do not wish to pay their bill commitments. Then to find out the collection cannot go to the tax roll for another 15 months because due diligence was not completed in the communication with the tax collector. So now, in my opinion, the agreement was no longer applicable since we recalled that vote. And the city manager, excuse me, was to have discussions with Waste Management about what future options could be. Well, if that agreement was no longer valid, then why did the process not go, not go out for rebid to see if any companies had changed their minds? I'm not saying that Waste Management would not be the best option, but there clearly was some issues. And maybe others may have put some boots on the ground to find out some information about the commercial, um, uh, customers if the process was started in a timely manner. It wasn't. It started in November, December, so you had six months. And there will be, uh, Indian River County is already talking to people and they don't expire until 2025. So we have dropped the ball, in my opinion. And I also agree that maybe Mr. McCollum's idea of the city looking into doing their own pickup would be an option. And I really think that that should be looked into as well. Um, and I know the franchise fees and things are coming up later, but I would like to go ahead and read my whole thing for this evening if I don't run out of time. Um, I'm not a franchisee. And so I'm confused as to why I'm paying a franchise fee to Waste Management to pay their franchise fee. My understanding for a franchise fee is that you pay your franchise fee out of your revenue. You don't collect it from somebody else to pay it for you. It looks like the Sebastian residents are going to pay for trash no matter what and then have to pay the franchise fee to allow them to pay their fee, fee. So basically, um, Waste Management's not paying anything to do business with the city. That's a pretty good raking of the residents, in my opinion. Um, with the billing, Waste Management is going to continue to do the billing for a price. I have always seen a business billing as a cost of doing business, not somebody pay for it for you. When, when the time for the tax roll, the collect, the tax collector will add an annual fee. And which, by the way, in the current, um, agreement that you're looking at tonight, um, one thing that it does say is that, um, the approval will be, um, obtained from the tax collector. So apparently that's not a done deal yet anyway, because there must be still talking about it. Are we going to wait until the last minute again on this and then come back and say, oh, it can't go on for another year? Um, it, it's just that this whole thing is messed up, in my opinion. And the ball was dropped in so many different places. And now to bring up, as Mr. McCollum had brought up statutes, that the process that we're following might be in violation of state law. Something really needs to be done. Um, and the city council really needs to start inspecting what they expect. If you expect someone to take the reins on something, then my goodness, please look and see what they're doing. Because apparently the ball was dropped seriously in this matter. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
We have one more.
Okay.
Hello, Mr. Stelman, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Am I coming through okay?
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
I'd like to first thank the council for bringing this issue up. I understand you're just voting on whether to keep subscription service or to go to citywide mandatory pickup. Um, there's pros and cons for both, and, uh, I'm just glad to see you had brought it up. Um, personally, I'm a, been a resident here since I was a, uh, young boy. And I've always had them pick up garbage. One of the things I noticed when, uh, people do take their garbage down to the transfer stations, sometimes we see garbage bags on the side of the road, uh, that have just basically been falling out or, uh, otherwise strung down the road on the way to the transfer station. Eventually they get picked up by city workers and such. Um, as far as the vote tonight is concerned, uh, it sounds like a lot of other questions have come up as far as issues with billing, uh, issues with, uh, legality and things like that. And if I had to vote, I would have to vote on keeping the subscription service how it is. I didn't know if you guys knew, uh, or not, other municipalities are actually using companies that will, um, take your garbage and turn it into electricity. They're called, um, waste to energy companies. And there's, um, probably about 30 or 40 of those companies in the United States and around the world in general. But they will actually pay municipalities for their garbage, um, help them get set up to collect that garbage and, um, billing and such like that. But that's another option for you. As well as another option for you with a lot of these new questions coming up, because these are very complicated issues. There's no reason for anybody to expect one or two or three people even have the answers on so many varied issues. You have the ability to use your other, um, uh, boards to your, at your disposal. You can, you can drop this on their lap, let them do the footwork, bring everything they can. They're fully staffed and ready, willing, and able to go. And bring up these, uh, issues and, and give you a full report. So that just by next time the next vote comes up, maybe these other questions will already be answered. But I, I just think one of the, one of the things out there, I didn't know if you knew about, was the waste to energy companies actually pay municipalities for their garbage. And I do appreciate you guys bringing this up for a vote tonight. And I do recommend, uh, staying where we're at for now, so we can answer these questions fully. And we can always bring it up later and maybe drop it in on the boards and let them help out with the, with, uh, their expertise and their voice. Thank you, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, is there anyone else on Zoom?
No one else has raised their hand.
Okay, uh, public input is closed. Council, do we have any discussions or motion?
I'd like to some discussion if we could.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously with three months before, we have a no contract situation. We don't have time to go out to an RFP. Another company's going to need 18 months to get trucks, so getting another bidder. And, and I, I, one of the people that spoke said we should have done this a year ago. Uh, apparently this needs to be done two years in advance so that, so that if a company's actually interested, they can actually get trucks in time before the contract comes up for, uh, uh, the, the inception date. You know, if, uh, it's funny, uh, 78% of the people subscribe to garbage service. And, and I'll be honest, I had a lot of people contact me about, about going universal, about doing it because it made the most sense for the majority of the people in the city. And I had people contact me and say, well, I don't know, uh, you need to consider all people, not just some people. You need to make sure you consider those people that cut their service off every year to go up north to their other house and make sure you talk and consider all people. And I'm like, well, if I'm considering all people, I'm considering all people, not just a small group. So I, you know, this is a tough one. Uh, I think we're back in the same place we were at that last meeting where it was a hard decision. Um, the stress over it all is unimaginable. The amount of contacts, you know, it's funny, and I said this and someone misheard it. So I will say it clear this time, those that are happy don't tell you they're happy. Only the ones that are unhappy scream and yell at you, tell you, email you, write you, call you, text you, get angry at you, unfriend you, those are the ones, that, that small percentage of people, those, those five to six percent of the people are the ones that make sure you hear them. And I always tell people, you people that don't care, you people that don't want to talk, you people that, that are okay with anything, if you get involved, these decisions are much easier. But you don't get involved, and so we have to make decisions on the people that contact us. So I'm going to make a motion that we move forward with a subscription trash service as my motion.
That's the, uh, once a, one day a week?
One day a week subscription trash service.
I'll second that. All right. Do we have any discussion on that?
I sure do.
All right, Mr. Dodd?
That's kind of contrary to what was, what you, was, was, uh, moved by the same individual two weeks, two meetings ago.
Yes, sir.
Um, it was very interesting that, uh, Richard Gilmore gave us his dissertation on, uh, a republic this evening. Um, and the difference between a republic and a democracy, quite frankly, is that in a republic, the rule of law is what governs the society. In a democracy, it's, it's popular majority vote that governs society. We are a republic by nature of the constitution, but we're a democratic republic by nature of the fact that the population is supposed to be democratically electing the representatives who make up the republic. Um, I don't want to get into all the details and ramifications of what goes on at the federal and state level that tries to make sure that doesn't work. But, um, as a republic, the five people sitting up here, the four of us physically here and Kelly, who is, uh, on Zoom, I hope still, uh, have a responsibility to do what's best for the society as a whole. And when we have between 70 and 80% of our current residents on a subscription service and, um, we're going to increase their monthly cost by two and a half times more than we have to, it makes absolutely no sense to me as a person elected to represent the public as a whole to make that decision. I believe it's counter to what the process is designed to do. Uh, for us to, for us to adopt a subscription service because 20 people stand up in front of us and tell us to not adopt it is the antithesis of a republic. It is not what a republic is designed to be. It is not what the responsibility of people elected in a republic should be doing. And right now, on a nationwide basis, we have way too many decisions being made because 20 people stand up and yell. I said this the last time. I don't remember. I apologize to whoever brought this up. I don't remember saying I don't care about people who can afford to do this. It doesn't sound like me. It really doesn't sound like something I would say. I may have, but I don't remember saying that, and I apologize if I did. But, um, it's, it's not the way that we should be making decisions, quite frankly. Um, we have, I was the one who brought this back. I was the one who caused it to go to three votes the last time. And I was the one who brought it back at our last meeting because I found out that we were looking at about a million dollar liability as a city. If we had to bill for 15 months worth of, of, uh, of suscrip, of, of, uh, universal service and we had to eat the bad debts. And quite frankly, Waste Management stepped up in a big way. And no, to the response to the person that came up, Waste Management is not going to charge us a single bad debt dollar in that 15 month window. They're going to bill quarterly for the services, just like they do today, but they're going to bill to everybody. They're going to, they're going to get the opportunity to keep 3% of the franchise fee as a cushion against bad debts. But they all know that 3% is not going to cover anywhere near what those bad debts are going to be. And they are prepared to assume the responsibility for all of those bad debts. That's for 15 months. The, the, the legal ramifications in 197, uh, 4B, subset B, uh, require that we do that notification prior to the time that we, um, prior to the time that we petitioned the county, uh, tax collector to put this on the tax rolls, which is probably going to need to be October of this year because it takes time to do notifications, takes time to get the process, and we have to notify them by January. Hopefully, we're going to notify them mid Jan, mid-December as opposed to waiting until January to do that, assuming we move in that process. Uh, that does not have to be done as part of this decision. All we're doing tonight is first choosing universal versus subscription, and then based on that decision, awarding a franchise to Waste Management. There's been an awful lot of work done, an awful lot of concessions made by Waste Management at the senior levels of their corporation to assist Sebastian in not having a million dollars for the liability in that 15 month window. And that's because I recalled that vote. And it is very disturbing to me when I think that the recall as an attempt to make sure that the city didn't caught with a million dollar liability is being turned into because of some testimony by 25 people into changing that whole process. It's very disturbing. And I know what the vote's going to be tonight, assuming that one of the three people who voted for universal before just made this motion. Uh, I know what the vote's going to be tonight. And I quite frankly apologize to the resident city of Sebastian because we have failed them in our responsibility as elected officials in this republic. We have failed them if we vote for subscription tonight. We have pushed a large rate increase on every citizen in this city for Waste Management so that a small percentage of the, of the total population gets what they choose. That is not, that is not in any way, shape, or form what's met by a republic or a democracy or a democratic republic. And it seems to be the way of government today. Where is the intestinal fortitude in elected officials? I will not support this motion.
Mr. McPartlin?
First, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Mai. Is, uh, Mr. Nathan McCollum, he brought up about Florida statute 197 dash 3632. And listening to Mr. Dodd, it's not until it goes on the tax roll that you got to follow that? Or was Mr. McCollum accurate that we need to do this portion first?
Uh, the process doesn't, uh, isn't required to be followed and to meet the deadlines. The first deadline, uh, for the 2024 tax roll, which was what is intended by this contract, the first deadline doesn't happen until January 1 of this year. So, uh, the contract is, is legal and can be adopted despite that statute as is. It, it does require the, under the current terms of the contract, it requires the city, uh, to adopt the uniform method in October 2024. And in order to do that, the city would have to follow the statute that was referenced. But it doesn't have to be followed prior to entering the contract.
Okay, so it's just when it gets on, put on the tax rolls and, and the tax collector's collecting it, is that?
One, if you enter, if you enter this contract with Waste Management, what's required of the city is that you put this uniform method on the tax rolls in October 2024. And in order to do that, you have to follow the process in the statute, which has several steps. And one of the steps, and the reason that we couldn't do the last contract without incurring the million dollars that was referenced before is we missed the timeframes to do those steps. But this time, the steps would be done prior to January of this year, and there's time to do that.
Okay. And then my second question is, is the termination language in the contract accurate that with cause, you have to give notice to the parties 30 days? And without cause, you only have to get, you have to give 120 days, but it doesn't cost you anything?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but I will pull it up as we speak.
Yes.
I had it on page 209 of our agenda. That's the last addendum number one. Cause I saw it earlier in the document, and then I saw all the addendums included. So I was like, hmm, which one, which one are we going with?
Okay, so it's section 15.4 that you're referring to. And what it provides is the agreement resulting from this RFP can be terminated within 30 days written notice from the city with cause if the franchise- if the franchisee is found to have failed to materially perform services in a manner satisfactory to the city. So that's with cause thirty days. The city's the sole judge of nonperformance. Now, related to without cause, the agreement can be terminated by either party without cause upon a hundred and twenty days written notice by either party. In the event of termination without clause, the franchisee shall be compensated for all services performed to the city's satisfaction. So what question do you have about that?
Is that if, if we wanted to fi-, you know, get out of this contract without cause, all we have to do is give them a hundred and twenty days notice? Make them whole for that hundred and twenty days and nothing else? I mean, it's not penalty?
Make them whole for everything they've done prior to giving them the termination, but there, there does not appear to be a, a penalty in this, in this termination clause.
And the same language is in the addendum number one, which is on page two oh nine of our agenda. It's the same, you know, because the addendum would take precedence of the termination contract. But it's the same language. So what I propose is also, Mr. McCollum, he emailed me, and I had a, a chat with him concerning the Vero idea. Now, today I spoke with Matt at Vero Beach, who's the Public Works Director, and he handles the trash. And Mr. McCollum's numbers were off, but that was off an old contract. And he told me their expense is three million dollars a year, but they take in three point five million dollars. They serve roughly seven thousand homes in the city of Vero Beach. And their rate is sixteen dollars and forty-five cents for twice-weekly garbage pickup and once-a-week yard waste. Now, they have six rear trucks and five front-loading trucks, which take care of the dumpsters. Now, on the rear-end trucks, they are three-man crews. And on the front loaders, it's a two-man crew, so one guy acts like, as the spotter when they gotta back up. I, you know, I said, I heard that they were considering getting out of the waste business. He said, no, that's not the case. He's very proud of the system. There have been some chain supply issues getting parts when a truck is down or whatever. And then he said the cost of buying a new truck, it used to be six to nine months, but in the current theme, it taken twelve to eighteen months. I think, you know, I'm propos-, I, I'm thinking our cost upfront would be probably six million, six million dollars cause we would probably need twenty-two trucks to service the city. But I think it's worth looking into because then we're the master of, of our own destiny concerning garbage. Because if we have to raise the rates, then we can easily go to the citizens and say, look, gas is ten dollars a gallon, we can't do this for sixteen dollars and forty-five cents anymore. And that makes it more easy to them. And again, I love Waste Management. I have never had a problem with Waste Management. The problem I have with the process this time is we waited too long to do anything. I have an email from Ms. Perez notifying the city that basically, hey, garbage contract's coming up, and that was on February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And then on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, she said, hey, we have a draft RFP, and they were looking at option one, subscription service twice a week, one-time yard waste. Option two, universal service, two-time garbage, one-time yard waste. Option three, subscription service, one-time garbage, one-time yard waste. And option four, universal service, uh, they had it down, one-time garbage, one-time yard trash, but what happened was, you know, two times garbage, one times yard waste. And, and so we knew in February twenty twenty-two, why did this come down to February or March that we're discussing the contract? We should've had our workshops when we were looking at going subscription or universal service in the spring of twenty twenty-two or the latest, September of twenty twenty-two. So I, I'm in agreement with the subscription service, but I want the city to look into possibly doing our own trash pickup because I think in the long run, it's beneficial for the city. I think we can do it. Vero Beach has been doing it for over thirty years. And that's what I would like to see because it's like, I've been pr-, sitting in front of me, I'm either making a bad decision or I'm making a worse decision. And I, I don't wanna do that, but I wanna look at, we could get out of this contract in a hundred and twenty days. So we can also do that and maybe have some conversations with the county because their expires in twenty twenty-four and give notice, hey, maybe we wanna go out together? Sometimes we get along with the county, sometimes we don't get along with the county. But I wanna know that we have an out mechanism. A hundred and twenty days notice, and we can get out. And I want the city to seriously look into doing our own waste pickup.
I have a question, Mr. McPartlin. Is the city of Vero Beach universal, mandatory garbage?
They do, they do universal. But also, that comes into what we had last, when we decided this contract, we were talking about the people who could not afford the service. The way we're going now, we have no way to help the needy that do that. If we look into this, we have people that can apply that are on a limited budget, and you know what? Hey, I got you, brother. I will take care of your Waste Management. I want that all looked into. You know, this is the thing, I don't, I don't think it was. And so I, that's what I wanna see.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd, for reminding me what my wife told me. Without conviction, I have nothing. I'm withdrawing my motion because my conviction told me that I represent all people, not just the people that scream at me, not the people that are angry with me, not the people that are unhappy with me, but I represent the seventy-eight percent of the people that don't get up here and talk as well. Um, I withdraw my motion.
I draw my second.
And I make a motion to go universal, one pickup a week.
Um, uh, Ms. Dixon, are you there?
Second, yes.
All right. Go ahead.
Yes, I, I seconded Mr. Nun's motion. I just wanted to say, I echo Mr. Dodd's sentiments. Um, you know, between all of the emails and phone calls we've received and just the numbers in general tell us that the majority of our citizens enjoy having their trash picked up. I know there are so many families who are way too busy to keep up with city council meetings, what's going on with the city, they're paying their bills, and they wouldn't notice what's gonna happen until their bill changes. Um, and, and they're not the ones coming up to us and speaking about, you know, their, what they would like to see us do. So I, I stick to my guns on what I said a few weeks ago on the universal once a week.
All right, thank you. Is that, is that all?
Yes, that's all.
Any, any other comments? Um, all right, let's just call to vote, Madam Clerk.
Okay, now, let, let's just make sure everybody understands. We're, we're, we're voting now not on this contract, we're just voting on the RFP response of universal.
For universal, yes.
Correct.
Call her.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
No.
Mayor Jones?
No.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Yes.
And Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries.
All right. All right, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I clarify that vote?
Okay.
To make sure we're gonna get, um, in the agenda, it says, remove from the table and approve the award of the RFP, exclusive curbside solid waste collection services to Waste Management, Inc., establishing universal once a week garbage pickup on all residential units, and authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents. Is that, was that the, was that the intent was to authorize the manager to execute the appropriate documents?
I think we have to bring those off the table.
Cause now we did.
Because they were voted, they were, they were tabled also at our last meeting.
I thought we were talking about what's listed. The second item, we did the second item first, and we're gonna then deal with the next, the first item.
Yeah.
What?
No, we, we, we did the RFP first. That was what we just voted on.
Yeah, the RFP, yes.
Was the RFP response. Now, we have to vote on the, the contract that was provided to us last meeting when we take it.
If, that would be the better way to do it so that we can keep it clear what you're approving.
And so I, if we're ready to go on to that next item, I'll move that we, we move that from the table and bring it up for discussion.
Do we get to vote on this last one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good, okay. So now we're going to two?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, um.
No, I think, I think what you wanted, what you, what you suggested voting on was the second part of one, as on the agenda, was authori-, or approval of the contract that's been provided by the city manager.
Okay, well, well, two. If I understand what happened at our last meeting, when I recalled the vote, sorry, my mic's not on. When I recalled the vote, we had already had the ordinance tw-, uh, zero twenty-three oh six, which is the exclusive franchise agreement presented to the council, so we tabled that as well.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that's true.
So we need to, so.
Can I clarify?
If, if you'd like, yeah.
So there's, there's two parts to this. One is the contract, which is, which was the AI, not the very first thing. You removed that from the table. The ordinance is not the contract. What the ordinance does, it protects the contract from the Uber garbage companies from coming in and doing it. So you have the contract for the solid waste, and the ordinance only, only enforce it, gives enforceability under section five of our code of ordinances. The ordinance protects the contract.
All right, so this contract that begins on page one thirty-nine of our packet, are you saying that as of this last vote, we approved this contract?
That was, that was the recommendation for the agenda item.
Okay, then I would like to recall the last vote.
Wait a minute, what now? Hang on.
So maybe I can just provide a little, little clarity.
Yeah.
So the reason that I asked for clarification because, was because it was unclear to me whether you were, your motion was approving the recommendation that the manager provided in A1, or whether you were just approving universal service?
We were approving universal service.
That's what I heard.
Yes.
So I don't think you've fulfilled all the requests from the manager. The manager would also, also sought authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents. The appropriate document would be the contract.
Okay, so.
Is, are there any other documents?
So, so in order, in order to remove that contract from the approval in the prior motion, we need to recall that motion and restate it?
I, I think your, your prior motion approved universal service.
Yes.
And I think it would be appropriate to make another motion to either authorize the manager to execute the appropriate documents or approve the contract that's attached.
Okay, cause you've actually executed, in your opinion, the verbiage documents, and that's included starting at page one thirty-nine of our agenda packet. Is that correct?
So I haven't executed those yet because you haven't, you haven't, you haven't voted to give them.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we get an opportunity to go through this and modify this thing cause there are changes to it that need to be made. Okay, so is that?
So if you want to do that, then you could bring it back at a subsequent meeting, or you can make those modifications now and then do, uh, a vote on the modified agreement.
Do we need to take any steps related to our, to the motion we just approved to do the second of your options?
Uh, the motion you approved can stand in that you, the motion was to, uh, establish universal once a week. And the clerk could read back the motion if you'd like, but
Okay.
you have not taken any action
Okay.
to approve the contract or authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents.
So we need, that's what we need to move forward.
All right, yeah, absolutely.
And can we just move forward with that, or do we need?
You can just do a motion to do that, or you can, and then a second and then have discussion, or?
Okay, I, I, I move. Then I, I'll make a motion that we review and, uh, request modifications to the contract, uh, franchise agreement between the city of Sebastian and Waste Management, uh, beginning on page, the twenty-six-page contract beginning on page one thirty-nine of our agenda packet.
I second that.
I did that to make sure because there's other copies of stuff in here. There's a lot of stuff in here, and I think these twenty-six pages are the, what we're really dealing with. Is that right, Mr. Carlyle? Okay. Cause there are things in here that, that are gonna need to change.
So, so.
Are we okay with that?
So we'll list that as, um, what is it? Um, we'll list that as eleven, A1, uh, AI, or I with a lowercase a.
There you go.
As a A.
That works.
For this one, yes. All right, Mr. Dodd?
Okay, I, I would, I'll, I'll start with the things I'd like to see modified in this so we can go forward. But, um, on page eight, in section seven, um, I, I would like to see the franchise fee modified. I, I think I represented that earlier in some of the contacts. Um, I believe that, um, based on the agreement that was reached with Waste Management that we need to collect the three percent franchise fee for the next fifteen months, that, um, they, they keep as, to cover part of the, uh, overbillings on that. And then at the end of that term, at, at, on, on October first of two thousand twenty-four, I believe that franchise fee should go to zero. I'm, I thoroughly agree with what I've heard from a lot of people that that's a tax, and why are we taxing them to do this? Uh, and so I'd like the franchise fee to go to zero at that point in time. And so the, uh, it's, the franchise fee section of this document needs to be modified to reflect that.
Can I, can I?
And that's only on residential, I'm saying that.
Can, can I?
Mr. Carlyle, yeah.
So remember that we have a fee for the tax. So Waste Management won't be collecting any franchise fees as of October one, they're done billing.
I know that, I'm just saying, and however, we need to take it to zero on October one, we need to do that.
But I have one comment, if I may, is when you go to zero, the tax collector takes a fee, just like they do from our stormwater fee.
Yes.
And currently, with the stormwater, it's a two percent fee. So the city would be funding that and the, that fee of reduction of, of cost to the tax collector cause we have to pay her to, to put that on the tax bill.
Okay.
That's number one, then you have the reduction of, of four percent when people, uh, pay their taxes early.
Okay, I understand.
Giving, putting, putting that out there for points to ponder.
Okay, I know. And I know Ken's back there going.
We need to keep the fee.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to also mention, uh, and I verified a few minutes ago because I was curious. Um, on your FPNL bill, there's a six percent franchise fee as well. Uh, franchise fees are common in the industry for, for an organization that is a single service because that money comes back to the city to help with the overall management of dealing with Waste Management as an organization.
I understand, I thought, and I thought, I actually thought through that quite a bit. Um, yeah, we have an option, FPNL, we don't have to buy our electricity from FPNL. We can franchise to somebody else to provide us electricity. Uh, and so FPNL is being granted, um, an option to provide service within the city of Sebastian, and in return for that, they have to pay us a six percent franchise fee. Quite frankly, the fact that they add that to the bill is a Public Service Commission problem and belongs at the state of Florida level. So if people don't like the fact that FPNL is adding a franchise fee to their bill, they should contact their representative and their senator and try to get somebody to do something to stop that cause I don't believe they should be able to add that to your bill. I think that's something, that's a, a cost of doing business to FPNL. But it's the same thing with that. So I, I, um, I'm open to discussion on this. I just, I, I wanna make sure that we're not taxing, we're not taxing our rep. Uh, th- this is, quite frankly, we had one person who responded to this. This is kinda like dealing with a monopoly, and I'm not, Waste Management, I need to say this very quickly. Waste Management has done everything humanly possible to work with the city on this. There's been absolutely no, I'm, I am a hundred percent satisfied with the, the way Waste Management has treated the city in this process. Um, but I don't know that we should be taxing the people that, that pay this when we only have one option to provide that. So, uh, it, i- if, if you wanna come up with language in this franchise agreement thing, that's fine, as long as it comes back to us, because this has gotta come back for another reading, am I correct?
No.
No.
The, the, these modifications are easy, but the one about the going to zero would be when you determine, when it goes on the tax bill.
Yeah.
So that would have no bearing on this contract because it, this contract has no effect.
And that's the reason I wanted to separate it.
Absolutely.
And we can, we can talk about that after we get through this process because that's a separate, maybe a separate issue. So as far as this agreement's concerned, I think it needs to be six percent. And then further in the agreement, we stipulate that they, that they do not have to reimburse the city that, that. that, that franchise fee as, for that fifteen months of the time that they're billing for.
So, clarify, you just said six percent. You wanna modify-
Three percent.
You wanna modify to three percent?
Three percent, yes.
For the fifteen months?
Yes.
And they do, they don't remit anything to the city?
Right, but, well, that's right. I don't want them to remit anything to the city during that time. I don't, now that does not mean that we change the resi- the non-residential franchise fee from six percent. Okay, I think that needs to stay there. Um, now, i- in, uh, eight point five one, it's interesting 'cause you're saying now that all the yard waste does not have to be bundled and so forth. Does that mean you're planning on using a bucket truck to pick that stuff up? Do you know? No? Okay, so people can still put their trash cans out? That was just a question I had when I went through this. Okay, alright. Now, on, um, on page ten of the agreement, uh, the, once again, the, uh, solid waste collection rate will increase by six percent. That needs to be changed to three. And then those dollar amounts need to be modified to, to reflect that.
Absolutely.
And then the last two sentences, three sentences, beginning with, "The city will bill all residential units effective October one, two thousand twenty-four by adding an assessment." All the way to the end of that paragraph needs to be deleted. It is not up to our contract, it's not up to our contract with Waste Management on how we're gonna collect that money after October one, two thousand twenty-four. That's a separate issue.
What line is that, Mr. Dodd?
So, you want the last two pa- the last two paragraphs struck?
Start, o- on the second paragraph, nine point one. If you start at the beginning of the fourth sentence from the, at, at the middle of the fourth sentence from the bottom where it says, "The city will bill all residential units effective October one twenty-four by adding assessment to the annual tax roll," period. "The city will reach an agreement with the tax collector concerning this matter," period. "The reasonable solid waste collection service rate shall be increased by the CPI adjustment." That needs to all be removed from this contract.
You, you want paragraph one, paragraph two and paragraph three removed 'cause it all relates to billing?
That's fine, however you wanna do that. Just beco- what I don't wanna do is confuse the issue with this contract and what we're gonna do October one of two thousand twenty-four. It's, wait, I just look at this simply. Theoretically, the city is contracting to select, to collect the, the citizen's waste and we're subcontracting that to Waste Management through this franchise agreement. How we pay for that after October one, two thousand twenty-four is our business.
The, um, the last paragraph needs to remain because that talks about, um, after rereading it, this talks about who's on the assessment role and if there's, if they're not on the assessment role, how we correct that with them. So, the last paragraph needs to stay.
Okay. But I'm just, I'm just interested in nine point one, those last four lines, starting at the beginning of the fourth line from the bottom, "The city will bill all residential," that being removed. I think they, Mr. McCollum had a good point in that we're confusing issues here and that's part of the reason why I believe that people felt that that, that state statute kicked in with this agreement. Because in reality, that sentence right there announces that we're gonna do this on a tax roll and we're not ready to do that yet.
I'm rereading this. Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Um, are you on nine point one?
I'm on nine point two payment. Um, there's, I, I, I think, yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Councilmember Dodd, that the, um, the, the, the com- the conversation or the example of the, us getting on a tax roll doesn't need to be there, but there's some other provisions buried in this contract. Not buried, but in the contract, it talks about certificate of occu- occupancy of when they actually service. So, I think we just take out all the reference to the tax roll, putting it on the tax roll and, and then we keep the definitions of how we define who is on, who, who comes in serv- gets a certificate of occupancy mid-year.
Well, I, like in, in the second paragraph of nine point two, I had highlighted we're new residential units added during the service.
Yeah.
I, I think that's important 'cause I asked that question and, um, uh, we had a discussion with Waste Management, I think with you on that, where they're, they're, they're anticipating that the city's gonna notify them at close, at, at CO, I guess, or something, at some point in time in the building department. The city's gonna notify them that they are to begin collection at this address. Um, and, and how we collect money from that address is our problem, it's not theirs. But the city's gonna notify them that they're to being collect, they're, they're to begin collection at that particular address.
Right.
And I think that's, this covers that, that notification. So, it does need to be in there when it says that. Okay, um, and the CPI adjustment is in there. That's fine. I know, I know that that's just the way it is. Um, the, 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 I think, I don't know if you're still listening, Mrs. Coy, but you'll love thirteen point two because I remember the last time this came up with Waste Management, you asked them about those fancy new compacters for recycling cans. Well, this contract says they're gonna give us five of those. Finally. So, mm, okay, let me go through and see if there's anything else I got in here. I got one more page marked. And I did have the, the termination clause all marked out, uh, Councilmember Partland. I didn't wanna talk about it too heavy 'cause I don't want those people to panic that we're gonna cancel this thing a hundred and twenty days from now on them, but, um, uh, you know, I don't think that's gonna happen. It, it, even if we were to decide tomorrow that we want our own trash service, we're talking two years to, to even think about getting it in place. Uh, it's not something you can do quickly. So, um, I, I wouldn't want anybody to be confused by the fact that somebody might say, "I can get a trash service starter next week." That's just not gonna happen, you know, so. So, those are my changes. Anyone else?
No.
Alright, um, thank you for that. Um, any, any other comments from council? If not, uh, I think we clarified this correctly for the record as IA, correct?
Right.
And, um, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this? Yes, sir.
Just before you take a vote, we'll need to, uh, have the motion maker prove it as amended as opposed to the way it came or not.
So, basically, I've been sitting here listening and, uh, I, I have a difficulty hearing. So, I'm not sure what I actually heard and what the final judgment is gonna be. If you're making a final judgment tonight, uh, what it actually is and how it's, how it was voted and who voted for what?
Yes, sir. We, we took a vote on, um, it was, uh, the motion was for universal service, um, one day a week, and it was a three to two vote for that. So, it is going to be universal.
But why is it the town or the city decided to do this when right along individuals were paying individually for this service? And why the city decided to take on this responsibility and this debt without notifying the, the people, uh, of this decision?
Right. We, we had, uh, public input on this, sir, and that's, we, we moved on to a separate part of it, but I wanted to clarify for you since you asked, um, what the vote was, what it was about. And, um, so it is gonna be universal and it was a three-two vote, universal.
So, that means everybody in the town?
Yes, sir.
Has to pay?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I disagree with that vote.
Well, we understand. Uh, that's fine, but that's a decision that was made by this vote.
My question would be is, how many people that didn't have the service, that were paying for it, this, when they found out that the, the, the service charge was gonna be increased, decided not to have the service, which I feel then would be the same as somebody not wanting the service to begin with.
Right.
I, I would be curious because you're saying that my being here and the few people that are here only represent a small percentage of the community. And I don't believe that's true because I've talked to a number of people and, uh, I'll tell you that most of them feel that they shouldn't add it to the taxes.
Right, yes, sir. I, I hear you on that, but we've already decided that, so we, we're, we're moving on to something different now, but that has been decided.
I think, I think it's wrong and I, I think, uh, I think somebody had brought up that according to the law of the state of Florida, which I am not familiar with, that what you're doing is against the state law.
No, sir, it is not.
And if that's true-
It's not.
And if, and, well, I don't know about that, but I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna find out-
Yes, sir.
If I, if it's possible. I'll call my state representatives up and ask them.
Absolutely.
You know, and why is it like, like you said, I don't, I, if the town was responsible for everything, I wouldn't have as much a problem, but now you're forcing us to pay an outside vendor and you're gonna force me to pay for that service which I never used, don't want. Okay, and, and like I said, uh-
I know, sir. I understand your position.
So, that means I, I can't have chicken twice a week. I can only have chicken once a week now?
Right.
I mean, it's comes, comes down. I mean, you people sit there, I don't know how much you're all getting paid and what kind of pension programs you're working on or whatever, but looking at it from my view-
I wanna see a big zero.
Yeah, right. Okay, sir. Uh, thank you so much, but we, we've moved on from that. I appreciate your input, Phil. Thank you so much.
I, I don't appreciate you voting to increase my taxes.
I get it. Alright, thank you, sir.
Without my, my input and the county's input.
Right. Alright, where were we? Um, is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this, authorize the city manager?
I would have one comment.
There's a-
One comment. When you start here-
Hey, hey, no, no. If you wanna talk, sir, come to the podium, please. Well, it's not that. Only have to have it on record.
Okay.
Your name for the record, sir?
Name for the record, Carl Kelly.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-year Sebastian citizen. When you're talking, Bob, about universal.
You talk to the chair, sir. Remember, everything is directed at the chair.
So, Bob mentioned universal and he mentioned following Vero Beach's trash pickup by the city, okay? Which means we have to buy trucks, hire people. Have you given any thought to, because of what's happening with the global warming, everything's gonna have to be electric? You know how much money we're gonna have to be spending for electric vehicles and this kinda thing? So, you talking maybe sixteen dollars now to pick up. What are you gonna be talking in five years?
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
There we go.
Ron Mather, Autumn Terrace. Apparently, I'm gonna get a ninety-six gallon transfer station in my yard that I don't have any place to put it. And then, uh, Waste Management will come pick up my transfer station and deal with it, but I'm already paying for a transfer station through the county, which I'll never, ever need to use again under universal. I won't need to use it because Waste Management is putting their ninety-six gallon transfer station in my yard. So, I'm paying taxes to the county and you know that's not gonna, or fees to the county, not ever lowering fees. And they're not gonna go away. They go up every year. So, that's what everybody needs, another non-ad, non-ad. So.
End of story. Alright, thank you so much, sir. Um, do we have anyone else?
Sherry Matthews, Sebastian. Uh, while we're talking contract, we're back on contract and franchise and the whole bit. On the June thirteenth contract, June of two thousand thirteen, correction. And, um, on the March eighth contract, on the residential, um, rates and billing, they pretty much had the same verbiage that night, on the March eighth, when it was, um, nine point zero. And the June of two thousand thirteen, they still had that same verbiage. I think what some of the heartburn is that when we're listening to a lot of people is that this is, the franchise fee has become an additional fee. Whereas before and for even up until March eighth, it was included with that eleven eighteen or whatever, nineteen forty-five, that type of thing. And now that it's become an additional and, and maybe there's an explanation for that, that maybe we can be given?
In, in their RFP response, Waste Management removed the franchise fee from the rate, quoted rates.
To give the nineteen forty-five cost?
Yes, they removed, they removed the franchise fee from their quoted rate. So, the RFP included the nineteen forty-two, I think it is, for universal one time a week. And then there was a note under all of those quotes that said that the dollar amounts did not include the, the franchise fee.
Okay, so-
So, that's why, that's why it is a separate item.
Alright, so now on the April twelfth contract, you have, um, this, some of the verbiage has been removed but it does take out the franchise fee, but you do have all other fees and I believe a franchise fee is another fee. So, that might be there. And I also noticed that the, um, verbiage of not making sure that the franchise fee is not on the bill has been removed from that section as well. So, I'm not-
They're, they're gonna be, Waste Management for the next fifteen months is gonna bill a three percent franchise fee.
Sure.
Separate from the nineteen forty-two. And then that, at the end of that time, the city is gonna deal with what they do with the franchise fee and we're gonna talk about that in a few minutes.
Okay, and when you keep going on this contract, I, um, and this is just the foreseeable future. I can see that nine point two, probably by the first of October in twenty-four, is going to require a, an additional person that works for the city of Sebastian to handle that. That's a lot of work.
Okay, now Waste Management, let me go back to nine point two.
This is nine two, the nine two is actually where the city takes over the responsibility, starting October first of two thousand twenty-four.
The city is not, that, 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 Mr. Carlisle, that was, that's actually a great catch 'cause that needs to change.
We didn't have official direction, we didn't have official direction from you all to change that. Um, at the last meeting when you voted on it, you wanted the city to do it, subsequent conversations.
Okay, but the, the agreement-
We can modify the agreement that Waste Management takes over those duties 'cause they have the ability to do it.
Okay, well, this, alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because, uh, the agreement that we have with Waste Management, and, and, uh, I got my piece of paper somewhere stapled in here, so I, just so I don't confuse it, the one I took. Waste Management is gonna bill on a monthly, on a quarterly basis for the next fifteen months. The city is not. Waste Management is gonna collect the fees for the next fifteen months to include a three percent franchise fee of which they reimburse the city zero percent. Waste Management's gonna cover any non-payment or any bad debts within that fifteen-month window. The city is gonna assist Waste Management in, uh, using our code enforcement people where they have people who don't do the, I mean, people who overflow trash and do things like that. Well, we're gonna do some code enforcement issue to assist them in some of that work. Um, and we're gonna, we're gonna allow Waste Management to stop pickup during that fifteen-month window for people who don't pay their invoice. And so, Waste Management is gonna issue a stop collection order, just like they do today, during that fifteen-month window for people who don't pay. That reduce, that, that will reduce their bad debts that they're absorbing, absorbing on the part of the city. Uh, the complaints are gonna continue to be handled by Waste Management, although we're gonna allow people to contact our city request line for complaints. Waste Management is gonna provide us a monthly report of all of the complaints that they receive, all the action that was taken on those complaints. I think they provide that report to the county now, so there's probably, there's a great example of what that report will be that they can provide on that, 'cause they currently provide that report to the county. So, we're gonna see the result of any call Waste Management receives and what action was taken as a result of that. Those actions need to be included in this contract. All of those actions need to be included in this contract. If it means revising this and bringing it back at our next meeting, that's what needs to take place. Now, I'm not, you know, I don't know whether, you know, I know they've got a very tight timeline on getting the stuff they need to order on this and they were hoping we could actually do the approval on this tonight. Um, yeah, but quite frankly, that all needs to be modified in this contract. It needs to reflect that. Nine point two needs to reflect those things that are in this contract. And I was under the impression when we discussed this before that that was going to be done before this was brought back to us tonight 'cause that agreement was reached last week with Waste Management. And I was under the impression that that, those changes were gonna be made in this contract before it came back to us tonight. And so, uh, they, they need to be made. Now, does that mean that we need to take a twenty-minute break and somebody needs to go through this thing? Or what do we need to do on this? Because, um, I, I can't vote to approve this without those changes being made to it.
Well?
And these, these are my notes directly from my in, personal meeting with Waste Management. They were very, and I wanna tell everybody here who doesn't understand this. Waste Management has gone above and beyond- the, the, the mile, uh, to assist us with this, they know they were the only bidder, okay, they're not, they're not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. They are a profitable company, they are in business to make money, so, any, any complaints about what their stock does needs to go to Wayne Ozinga, not to our local people, but I don't think he'll listen, but.
Isn't he dead?
Are we okay with these changes?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we just make the change that they're gonna be responsible for providing those reports, and it's part of the reports.
Well, it's more the reports, I mean, we're staying, nine point two says the city be responsible for billing and collection of the residential solid waste collection services, uh, beginning, okay, beginning October one, two thousand twenty-four, that doesn't need to change.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so we're fine with, as long as those things are in here.
Yeah.
We're okay, and are, they are in here?
The only thing that we, I've gotta read up on it again, but I think that the, um, Waste Management is gonna do the, the, all of the, um,
Everything.
Complaints and reports and everything, so.
Everything.
Okay, but all of the billing stuff is in here, and all of the agreements with them to do that is all in here?
Yeah, if you read it, they, they're gonna, they're gonna do.
That's in nine point one, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We just have to fix the, the fee rates in nine point one from twenty sixty-two, and the, and the percentage of the, of the franchise fee, and pay the half of it to the city, like you had asked for, so.
Okay, I, I, I'll make a motion, I move that we agree the franchise, that, that we approve the franchise agreement between City of Sebastian and Waste Management as amended, uh, with the, uh, city manager, uh, to amend it and at least give us an amended copy to review. And not, not hold it up, but we approve.
That amendment also includes the, uh, on nine point one, the last two sentences as well, right?
Yes, oh yes, the nine point one, which includes removing those sentences in nine point one.
Three percent.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we got that marked out.
Are we also discussing in there, uh, what we're going to do with the, uh, franchise fee?
Only, only the three percent, and they're not reimbursing us any, then we're gonna have a separate conversation about it.
About the other one, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Alright, so, uh, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Alright, any discussion more from council? Um, Madam Clerk? Oh. Uh, no, we haven't.
We already done, yeah, we're good.
Um, Madam Clerk, call the robe.
Is that satisfy what you need, okay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
No.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes. Alright, so the next item that we have on our agenda is item eleven I, I?
No, eleven A two, right?
No, uh, is we calling it eight two? Oh, I thought it was I, okay. But this is the one where we remove from the table, um, that we gotta hold the first reading of ordinance number O dash twenty-three dash O six, is that correct?
That's correct, that's what we're on.
Alright, so.
I'd like to make a motion to remove, uh, ordinance twenty-three dash O six from the table.
Second.
For reconsideration.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, move from the table now, can we have, uh, uh, Mr. Attorney?
An ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Florida granting an exclusive franchise agreement for residential and commercial solid waste collection to Waste Management, Inc., providing penalties for violation, providing for sunset of existing commercial providers, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, and effective date.
Alright, thank you so much, sir, Mr. Carlisle?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this is, this ordinance is what grants the exclusivity to Waste Management as part of our, I think it's section five of our Code of Ordinances. This is what has been done previously in the past to protect the, the rights of Waste Management, have an exclusive agreement with the, with the town, with the city for providing these services for commercial and residential, we'd ask the council approve this ordinance on first reading, and then set it for a date, uh, for, uh, the twenty-sixth of April for, uh, second reading.
And, and let me ask a question, that, that exclusive franchise agreement is based on the agreement that we just approved?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Is, is there, um, anyone from the public who would like to speak on this?
Franchise agreement.
This is a franchise agreement. Alright, do we have anyone on Zoom?
I have one with their hand raised.
Okay, bring him in.
Hello, Ms. Coy, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, thank you, um, my hand's been raised, my, I was up for the last, last item, and I'm really disappointed that I didn't get to speak, I don't know who were sleeping, but I had my hand raised to speak under the last item, um, so here I am for this item. First, let me say that, uh, I, I am for universal service, so I, I just wanted to fill that in, cause some of you mentioned that, so I'm not unhappy about uh, your selection, however, this process has been a horrendous example of how to do business with the City of Sebastian, it's terrible. I'm sitting here at home watching on la, on TV the process you're going through, I can't tell you, you need to go home and watch this yourselves, and go back to the item, uh, two items back on the contract, and listen to what you're saying. It is so confusing, and I know about these processes, I went through this contract stuff with Waste Management ten years ago. So I'm not new to this. It was horrible and embarrassing to watch all the confusion, what item are we on, what did it say, no, I don't think so, and it went back and forth and back and forth. So, I know I'm getting older and probably easier to confuse, but that was a horrible example of business in the City of Sebastian, it was an embarrassment. And that's all I wanted to say, I want you to know that I support your decision, but this process has been horrible, and, and all of the folks sitting in the audience that wanted their say and stuff are just so frustrated because they didn't get to have enough opportunity to participate in this process, and then when they did come, it was so confusing, you can't even follow what's going on. That's all I'm saying, oh, by the way, thank you, Councilmember Dodd, I'm so glad to hear there are five more garbage, uh, pickup, I, I truly am happy about the ten uh, compacters, uh, and Waste Management, um, I, I, I truly love those guys. They are a good company, so I know that they, they'll bend over backwards, but you have to ask them, and it has to be in a timely fashion to get this stuff done, and you gotta know what you, you're asking for. And I, I don't think, I think we just did a horrible job, thank you for entertaining me, and, and I, I don't know what's going on, my hand was up the last time, anyway, thanks for listening.
Alright, thank you so much, do we have someone else?
No one else has raised their hand.
Alright, uh, public input closed, council?
Uh, can I ask a question?
Of course, yeah.
Maybe it's a silly question, but what do we need a franchise agreement for if we're going universal? Uh, if everybody's already paying for garbage, if they really wanted to pay for Uber trash to come pick up their trash, it would be kind of ridiculous, because they'd already be responsible for paying for trash. I mean, if we went subscription, I get having a franchise agreement, because it's kind of like a non-compete clause, it kind of gives them the ultimate right to pick up trash, but if we have a universal agreement that's already covering every resident, I mean, if they really wanted to spend an extra hundred bucks a month to have Uber trash to come pick up their trash, what difference would it make? Just, I'm curious if I can, the city manager.
Because the commercial isn't under universal.
Cause the commercial is not on universal, okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Alright, anybody else? Alright, um.
I move approval of ordinance O twenty-three O six based on the, uh, agreement that was approved, uh, previously, and as amended.
Second that.
So we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Uh, hearing nun, uh, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
No.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Yes.
And Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Alright, let's move on here to, how much time do we have, we, we need to extend?
Oh, we need to e- extend, we're at nine eleven now.
We, we can extend it in a couple minutes.
Yeah, we can extend it if we need to.
Nine twenty. So let's do a quick vote here.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to item twelve A, um, Mr. Carlisle?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this is a RFQ, Request for Qualifications, twenty-three zero, zero one is to design and build for four airport hangars at the airport. This is funded primarily by DOT grant, uh, the cost of the project is one point five seven million, FDOT grant is one million, two hundred fifty-six thousand, the city match is three hundred fourteen thousand, the, uh, of the bids received, uh, the scoring committee unanimously recommended Wright Construction, they were also the companies, you know, that did the Public Works compound, and, um, we're asking you to authorize us to get into a, uh, guaranteed maximum price agreement with, with Wright Construction and bring it back to you all for approval, for the design and construction of the four hangars.
I move approval of, uh, the response to RFQ twenty-three dash one.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion?
Public.
Um, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No one has raised their hand.
Public input closed, any discussion for council? Hearing nun?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, cause I'm looking, and, and Wright Construction, they did a really good job at the Public Works compound, but I really like to give a local person kind of the job, there's one from Orlando, that's number five, there's one in Fort, Fort Pierce, one's eight, but they've been in business for like sixty years, and there's the one in Cocoa that's been open for thirty years, I'd rather try and keep the money as local as you possibly could, but I think I'm probably the only one who wants to do that, so, that's my two cents.
Were they given a local preference of any kind?
So there's not a local preference on, on qualifications, cause there's no money involved in the pro, in the, in the bid process?
Yeah, I mean, we, okay, cause we, we do have a local preference ordinance.
So that's on bids where you have a cost value, and it, and it, and once you get over a certain cost value, then it doesn't, it's not applicable anymore? So there's no value to, to give local preference, it's based on a, a cost share.
Alright, um, any other questions? Madam Clerk, call the robe.
Councilmember McPartlin?
No.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
And Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Alright, uh, next item on our agenda is.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interrupt, um, in the last eleven A, we added eleven A three, and I don't think we ever addressed eleven A three. It was added by Councilmember Dodd.
Yeah, that was the one about the franchise fees.
Yeah.
Oh, so, I mean, just as a point of order, do you just wanna delete it, or we can just?
Yeah, we can delete it, because he added it in under the other one, we add it in as I A.
We, we, we need to address that as part of our work this summer on the movement to the.
So just to lead item A three?
Yes, item A three, right, no, I three.
Yeah.
Alright, um, next item is, uh, item twelve C, um, Mr. Carlisle?
So, this is the, um, air conditioning units at the old schoolhouse, uh, it is become apparent, these AC units are just reaching their life expectancy, and two of them had failed, and while we were working on trying to get those replaced, two more failed, so it became an issue that the cost required us to bring it to council for approval, but I don't think there's any air working over there now, I don't know that today's the issue, but we've gotta get those, those replaced, and the old R twenty-two units, we just can't get parts for them, and they're just outdated, so we're gonna, they've recommended going with, uh, instead of four units, going with two five-ton units instead of having the four, two and a half ton units. So we'd ask you to approve the, uh, discretionary sales tax, the nineteen thousand, four dollars and sixteen cents to replace the air conditioning units at the school.
Alright, thank you, sir, um.
I move approval.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion, a second, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No one has raised their hand.
Alright, public input closed, uh, any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk?
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
And Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Alright, um, moving on to item twelve D, um.
Mr. Mayor, I, even if we extend the meeting to ten o'clock, I don't think we give them this twelve D adequate time, and I don't feel comfortable being rushed, and I know that we're having a caucus meeting Friday, maybe we could have a special meeting after that at six o'clock, that, to me, that would make a lot more sense.
Okay, I, 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 I will support the having a special meeting at six o'clock, to deal with just this item.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, um, yeah, because we don't have enough time to cover this.
Okay, so I, is mine is a motion?
Yeah.
And?
I'll second it.
You want to table it to the, no, no, not table, right?
No, we just.
Have a special meeting Friday?
Yeah, we're just.
At six o'clock.
I recommend you just remove it from the agenda, and then it can be re, when the agenda for Friday is, is, uh, uh, issued, it can be put on that agenda.
Alright, so I make a motion to remove it from the agenda and place it on the agenda of a special meeting Friday, April fourteenth.
At six o'clock.
Beginning at six o'clock.
At six.
Six o'clock, okay.
My, my, my concern with that is, you have a lot of members of the public that are wanting to interface and be involved, and putting that on a Friday night makes it difficult for them people.
But there are a lot of people that wanna discuss the issue, and I don't think forty-one minutes will cover it.
I agree. I don't. Yeah.
I think if they're interested, they'll be here Friday.
Okay.
Special meeting Friday, alright, uh.
Now, that, uh, that is for the three items that we've included under item D, discussion charter officer evaluations, discussion of the contracts, and set schedule for new contracts.
Right.
Okay.
So all we need is consensus on that, correct, or do we need a?
No, somebody has to request a special meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, the first thing you should address is twelve D, you can just make a motion to remove it from the agenda.
And that was done by Mr. McPartlin, and I seconded that.
Okay, so just get a vote on that, and then you can address the special, uh, meeting af, later on.
Okay.
Okay, um, we can, now we can move on to addressing the special meeting then.
Well, we haven't voted on the motion till we move it from the agenda.
We haven't voted on it.
We haven't voted on this?
No.
That can be a voice vote.
Which, which one might go?
I think we've been in here too long.
What do we, what do we vote on now, just so I'm clear?
To remove the item from the agenda, what you suggested.
To remove item D from the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that can be a voice vote.
Yeah, we can, alright, all in favor of having that removed from the agenda, item twelve D, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, now, next motion?
Now, Bob, do you wanna request a special meeting, or you want me to do it, I'll do it if you want me to do it.
You do it.
Okay, then, uh, uh, Mr. City Manager, I request a special meeting beginning at six PM on Friday, what's the date on Friday?
The fourteenth.
The fourteenth, to discuss, um, the city, city charter officer evaluations, charter officer contracts, and set the schedule for charter officer contract completions.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second?
I mean, I, I could've done that in email, do you need an email from that, no, okay, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
I, I know that this.
Do we need public input on that?
We went through all this a year and a half ago.
Probably.
Mr. Mike, do we need public input on that?
No.
I think it's procedural in nature, I don't think you need public input.
No, alright, that's good, so, um, we're all agreed, right?
Yeah.
Alright, next thing on agenda, city attorney matters.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
I don't think we covered the short-term disability insurance.
Oh, we took, we tabled that.
We tabled that, I'm sorry, yeah, we, we did that earlier at, uh, at the beginning of the meeting before it started, that's tabled for now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, alright, Mr. Mike?
Uh, nothing further tonight, thanks.
Uh, Mr. Carlisle?
I have nothing further.
Um, Madam Clerk? Councilmember Dixon?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Dodd?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Oh, good, thank you, Mr. McPartlin?
I just have two items, I, I would like the city to really consider looking if we can provide our own trash service and come up with the costs and, and the estimates, and speak with Vero, and Fort Pierce does their own, and look at that, and then I'd also like the city to do a cost analysis on golf carts for the next contract, because it seems like with the electric, there's always a problem with the batteries, and I noticed that at the county, Sandridge Golf Course, they use gas carts, and they have a much higher resale value than the electric, because everybody figures the electric, the battery's gonna go bad, and, you know, I talked to Greg Gardner about it, and then the other one I would throw in is I know there are, uh, golf carts that run on propane, which is kind of the cleanest form of, of using gas, and look at the pricing, the resale value, and the maintenance, cause I think the gas con, for a gas one, you know, it's kind of minimal, it's a small type of engine, and we could handle that, and then for the propane, I remember in the, in the Army, And then for the propane, I remember in the, in the army in the eighties, they had a lot of trucks that were running around the base that were on propane, because they ran so clean that the engines lasted almost forever.
Yes, sir, um, now, did, you, Mr. McPartlin?
That's, that's it, sir.
All right, um, Brett Jones, um, nothing, Vice Mayor?
Apologize for my indecision tonight, thank you.
You don't have to apologize for anything, my friend, we're good. Uh, this meeting is adjourned.